Welcome everyone to the West Orange Board of Education Virtual Meeting Wednesday, February 3rd. And so, good evening, Dr. Cascone, good evening, members of the board, good evening, our West Orange community members, and Ms. Flowers. It's all yours.
Okay, I'll start with a roll call. Mrs. Welton?
Present.
Mrs. Merklinger? Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tunney Cliff?
Here.
President Trick Scales?
Here.
Thank you. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 19th, 2021. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in a lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. And Dr. Cascone, I think you are up, followed by board reports?
Sure. You know, I'm gonna keep, keep, keep this brief and largely focused on the policy work on our docket this evening. But just wanted to wish everyone well in our community. I hope, I hope everyone is essentially dug out at this point in time. I'd like to thank our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Semino, and our team of maintenance, buildings and grounds, and custodial staff for their tremendous work in getting a good, good chunk of the work done today. We're continuing to work with our contracted plowers and local DPW to continue to move snow and relocate snow, which is an ongoing process. Would like to also thank our partnership, our partners rather, in the township, West Orange, from the DPW, Office of Emergency Management, for their assistance as well. I'd like to thank our, really our entire community, our families, our staff, for just really the manner in which they've all just kind of handled the ups and downs and, you know, just calls that are being made and really just kind of getting on board and pitching in and doing what's necessary to keep our district moving forward. And I feel really proud actually of the efforts which our community has put forth this week thus far. You know, obviously, we aspire to be back in the schools next week, but in the meantime, just want to give, again, give my thanks to everyone for pitching in. Just as a kind of an interesting little sidebar before I get into the, the policy work, I had a great meeting today of our, our leadership team. And I actually invited two members of the Black Student Union, Dylan Wimberly, the, the president, and Marley Diaz, who's a member, not an officer but a member, and of course, they both sit on the Superintendent's Student Equity Council. And members of the community had reached out to me and said, you know, really just kind of complimenting the BSU for the, the kind of the calendar of events that they had put up for Black History Month, and said, geez, it would be great if this, these could be really disseminated and shared throughout the district. So I have in fact shared them with the principals, but in my response to that email, I copied Mr. Wimberly. And I said, well, I introduce you to Dylan Wimberly, you know, founder of the African American Heritage Club, now BSU at the high school. And we will certainly convene and see how, how the BSU might be able to be a resource to our, our building administrators and our teachers with some of the things they're doing. So last week, I met with, with Dylan, Marley, as well as Ms. Laun Jackson and Ms. Hedlam, their advisors, and I invited them to today's leadership team meeting. And so it was a great opportunity. I was really, really proud of both Dylan and Marley coming and, and speaking to our leadership team. And are going to share a couple of different ideas. One of them is really more geared towards middle school students where we're going to have, actually it's grades four through 12, where students are going to record minute-long videos basically speaking about what black history means to them. And then we're also going to be working with Marley with part of her bookmarks program, which is actually now a Netflix series. Marley continues to do amazing things both in the community and outside. But as I said in the meeting, I said, you know, this, this, these are the kinds of things that really supercharge me up as a superintendent, as an educator. Because too often, students and staff exist in these silos, obviously other than in the classroom where they're together, but opportunities when we can bring students, and in this particular case, educational leaders together, where we're sharing information. And in fact, sometimes the students are even leading the way. I mean, that is, that's great stuff. I mean, that's the kind of stuff. I'd like to tell you that HVAC keeps me coming back, but you know, this is the kind of stuff that keeps you coming back as a superintendent and educator. And it's just one of, one of many, many things that are going on this month to recognize Black History Month. And we certainly look forward for the remainder of the month at our other meetings and presenting out on the amazing things that are happening. So with that being said, I would just kind of tee it up for, for policy a little bit, just for, and then I'll, I'll, I'll hand off to the board. So what, you know, what we have here tonight is we have a slate of policies that are up for second reading and ultimately adoption. These were policies that were for first reading at the last policy work session. And we also later on, and when we move into the work session part of the agenda, there are approximately, it's between 10 and 14 policies that were previously flagged by the board for, for additional feedback. Those were obviously shared with the board last week. You've had an opportunity to, to review and provide some feedback. And I know you actually already have done that, so we can have a more informed conversation about those policies. We will make notes on whatever edits or suggestions you might have, and then we will get to work on making those revisions to those policies. But this is a final point on this, is with the light at the end of the tunnel, I, I, I'm comfortable saying that we're close because with this adoption of policies forthcoming tonight, we will now have done, adopted a number of policies in each of the four columns in our original kind of work table. And at this point, we'll be able to really take stock of the remaining policies that are left to kind of get across the finish line. And I would suggest there are probably somewhere between 75 and 100 policies. So the end is in, is in sight. I'd like to thank the board for their, all their hard work on this. And with that, I would turn it back over to President Trick Scales.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Are there any board reports at this point in time, or do board members prefer to hold off on comments? You can just let me know. Shall I do the round robin? Ms. Huerta?
Um, yes, I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll begin. I kind of had not much to say, just keep it brief before the policy workshop. Just a little update for the PR committee work that we've been doing. Cheryl and I, you know, did have an opportunity to, you know, collaborate a little bit and just want to let the town and the community know to be aware for a refresh look on our West Orange Board of Ed page. There's going to be many changes, especially now that we're finalizing a lot of our policy work. So we're looking forward to that. And we also do want to let the community know that we will be working with the local PTAs and our council of PTAs. And so just keep an eye out for, for that update from your local PTAs.
Thank you. And I know there's a lot more to come. Probably at our next meeting, we'll have more detailed reports. Ms. Merklinger, sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm actually gonna hold off because we have our public meeting, our regular meeting on Monday. So Melinda already covered the public relations update, so I will defer until Monday.
Okay. Mr. Rothstein?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
And Vice President Tunney Cliff?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight one thing that I saw today that I thought was wonderful. The Student Council created a series of spotlight videos in celebration of Black History Months, which highlighted some of the powerful black women right here in West Orange. And one of the videos features our own Ms. Trick Scales, and another one features our student board member, Andre Celestin. And that's posted on our website as well as on our Facebook page, and there's some really great nuggets of wisdom, and it's really inspirational to see these videos. So I encourage you to check it out when you have a chance. Thanks.
Thank you. I had forgotten to even look. So thank you for that reminder. All right. And thank you, everybody. And Ms. Graftiza, we're going to move into our questions from the public on agenda items only.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to have, to make questions on the public agenda items only, it's the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And you do not have to wait for someone else to finish talking before you press that button. And we do have a call-in person. If that person would like to have public items only, it is star nine. Just want to give that option. And there are no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we're now up to attachment number one, and that's the second reading of the adoption of the attached board policies. And so if we take a look at that page, we're looking at the 100ths, which is the bylaws, the 2000s program, 3,000 teaching staff members, 4,000s, the support staff members, the 5,000 students, 6,000 finance, 7,000 property, 8,000 operations, and 9,000 community. Is there a motion to accept the second reading of these policies?
A motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I actually had a question.
Yes.
When we discussed last time about identification, and I think it would be more relevant also to the 500s for the students, we spoke about whenever possible to espouse discipline with restorative justice practices, just to go align, align with our equity bylaw. And so I don't know if we, I know I mentioned that at the last policy workshop. So one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 0110 identification, when we were talking about the school IDs and the discipline aspect at the end. So I think it would, I don't know if we looked into possibly adding, I know Dr. Cascone said-
Is, Mrs. Huerta, is, is, is that, is that identification bylaw that relates to student identification?
Right. Yes.
Is there a particular policy number that you're referencing, Ms. Huerta?
So the Strauss estimate policy would be 0110, and the West Orange policy would be 5111.
Well, that's by-
This is, yeah, that's actually a different issue, Ms. Huerta. The 0110 is about the name of, of the school board, not about student identifications.
Oh, really? Okay. I'm sorry. My apology.
No, that's actually good news.
Easy to get confused, yeah.
That's great news, because if it weren't that the case, then I would have, actually, there would have been an oversight on my part, and I would have felt terribly about putting a policy that was flagged for editing and not having done that. So-
Okay, okay. And my apology, I think I was-
No, no, it's okay. The, that, I'm sorry, Mr. Rothstein.
I apologize. I was talking over you.
Thank you. That policy which, to which you've referred, Mrs. Huerta, has, is, is in a separate queue, which is in a really neat stack on my desk with about 15 other ones that have to go to different, different people in different stages of editing. So we will, when you see the final proof of that policy, it will reflect that change for the restorative justice language.
I was just-
I do distinctly, yeah. No, then that's my fault.
Briefly, since it's a very short policy, this one, 0110, is a bylaw, actually. It begins with name, the official name of the Board of Education shall be, quote, "The Board of Education of West Orange in the Essex County," or I'm sorry, "in the county of Essex," close quote. It goes on to talk about the purpose of the board, the composition, classification, address, et cetera. So yeah, so we're, we're safe. The, the point you're bringing up is an important one, but a different policy.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Flowers, roll call, please.
I apologize, if I may. Can I just confirm the first and second? Was it Ms. Merklinger and-
Tunney Cliff. Vice President Tunney Cliff?
Yes. This is on the second reading.
I actually see Ms. Flowers is frozen right now. Just want to make sure. Oh, no. Ms. Flowers, you're actually behind us. You're on a lag. Let me see if I can-
Considering all this snowfall, I'm not surprised that somebody's frozen tonight, so.
Let it go, Mr. Rothstein. Um, yeah, so I see that she is frozen right now.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, uh, so I have Ms. Huerta, Huerta, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Merkinger?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tunney Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we're up to reports, discussions, and recommendations. So does anyone have a report, a discussion, or a recommendation before we move on to our workshop? All right, there being none, I'm just going to mention a couple of things. There are two items that I had researched through New Jersey school boards, and I've talked to some of the board members before. One is the Code of Conduct for remote meetings, and the other one is Code of Governance for Best Practices. And the Code of Conduct for Remote Meetings, I think I shared that one with you. I would like us to, at our next policy meeting, to be able to look at these formally and make some recommendations. So I would ask you to please take a look, mark them up, make notes. The Code of Governance for Best Practices, I had also included one from a neighboring school district that school boards held up as a model. And in that one, I like it because it talks about committee work. And I've not seen anything in our bylaws that really gives us great guidance on how we do committee work. And so I'd like us to take a look at that, and we can certainly develop our own, but that is a good best practice to take a look at. All right. So I think we're ready to move into the meat of the meeting. So I'm going to hand it over to our committee, Ms. Merklinger and Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you so much. And Cheryl, if you don't mind, I, I think Dr. Cascone already covered it, but I just kind of wanted to recap where we're at right now and what we're doing, and then, and then what it looks like for next steps before we dive into it. Thank you. So we have 13 policies that had been reviewed previously and that we're going to go into a little more detail on tonight before recommending either additional changes or moving these forward to a second reading. And, and so that will be the, the bulk of the work for tonight. And as Dr. Cascone mentioned, that leaves us with, with, compared to the thousands of policies that there are total, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 100 or less, 100 or fewer, I think you said, Dr. Cascone. And so Mrs. Merklinger and I will be working with Dr. Cascone to make sure we're in alignment on what those remaining policies are, what work is remaining to be done on them, and pushing those forward hopefully very quickly in, in the next couple of months to get these reviewed, edited as needed, adopted. And then I think the big next step, as I understand it, would be to work with Strauss ESMA and with IT to put these new policies up on the board website with a new search engine that will make, make all of these policies much more easily searchable for the board members and for the, for the public. So a lot of really important work is hopefully coming to, not exactly conclusion, because this is ongoing work, but this important phase of, of the work and introducing the Strauss ESMA policies will be wrapping up relatively soon. So exciting. And, and thank you so much to Mrs. Merklinger and Ms. Trick Scales for all of your work last year to get us to this point where we're close to wrapping this up. So we hadn't really discussed this or planned it out in advance, but I think Cheryl, if you're okay with this, I think maybe we would just go in, in number order of the, the documents that were provided, that were provided to us last week, numbered one through 13. Or would we rather go by, by board member and work through the policies that each board member was responsible for?
If everyone doesn't mind, I'd like to just start with number one, and we're probably down with 13. This way we're a bit organized. And I think the policies themselves were provided to us in that order. So just for efficiency purposes, why don't we just start with the first one? Which was 9125 School Cable Channel. And I know we had to sign these out for everyone, you know, they were assigned out to board members, just to give the community background. The 13 were assigned out with the, the caveat that any board member could review all of them, which I'm sure most of us actually probably did. So I would just say, the first one was assigned to Jennifer. So Jennifer, I don't know if you had any concerns or questions about, about 9125? Or Scott, if there's anything you want to add in before we get started into the policies themselves?
I think Mrs. Tunney Cliff had, had some, some, some notes and some questions. And, you know, the board would allow, we, we might have, we have an ad hoc expert on the cable, the cable television channel who's facilitating our meeting. So, so Mrs. Graftiza might be the most qualified to answer these questions, so.
Not misses, just missed. Don't put me into misses.
I apologize.
No problem.
I'm maring you off, Mr. Graftiza.
No problem. Yeah, any, any questions you have, I'm here for you guys.
But Mrs. Dunne Cliff, I, I know you, you had some questions. I don't know if you wanted to raise them for, you know, for the, for the board and the public's sake?
Sure. I'm, I'm just a little lost at the moment. I'm just trying to find my notes because I left them online, and now I'm like, oh, where did I put them?
Somehow they're appearing-
I had some questions. So if you're searching for it, I can ask my questions and-
Sure, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Merklinger.
Um, so for School Cable Channel, one of the things I noticed on this Strauss ESMA policy was that it's a select one option, live programs, and it wasn't checked off. So I'm not sure if we need to do that, but I also noticed our West Orange policy went a little bit more in-depth in terms of what types of programming we could have on our school district cable chan, cable television channel. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to maybe incorporate some of that into the policy. I, I thought it was kind of important to note that the Board of Education limits the inclusion of public announcements that are related to, that are, I guess it says, the word, or West Orange policy says, "The Board of Education limits the inclusion of public announcements to those that are non-political, non-commercial, and non-doctorate." So I thought that was kind of something we might want to, and I didn't see it really called out in the Strauss ESMA policy, but I might have, maybe I, it's worded differently. I know sometimes it's just a matter of the verbiage, but I didn't see anything that was specific to, to that.
I may add, because I also noticed that as well, but it does mention the channel will not broad, on the Strauss ESMA, it says in the last paragraph before it asks you to select an option, it says, "The channel will not broadcast the program that endorses a candidate or-
Right.
-for public office, political party." I kind of felt that the Strauss ESMA covered everything that the West Orange mandated. The only question, the question that-
My concern with that was, and I noticed that, and so thank you, Melinda, I, what I just, my concern is just saying a political candidate versus non-political. I felt non-political was a more larger net versus just a political candidate.
Just weighing in from the educational standpoint, and I, I definitely see Mrs. Merklinger's point. I guess the question is, 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 you know, could a, could a, a student, student program be political in nature in that it was, for example, a, a, a program that, that was covering a, you know, impartially, a, an election, right? And by, by, by nature, it's political. So, you know, politics and the study of politics is inherently a, you know, it's an educational endeavor, right? So I, I think that's something to consider as well, is, is political, is political candidate too specific and, and non-political too general?
If I can just jump in real quick on that, we actually do on our news program with the kids, the broadcast journals in class, we have covered elections, both local and federal, you know, non-biased, of course. So I don't know if that would fall in what, what Dr. Cascone is saying, that we do run not political things, but they'll do stories on the politics of America.
Yeah, I think I was looking at this as more of like, we wouldn't play commercials for our candidate on our cable channel. I think I was looking a little more-
Right, correct. We don't do that, yeah.
Right, right. But it's not, so the Strauss ESMA policy doesn't specify that. Whereas our West Orange one is a little bit more larger, where it says, "Limiting inclusion of public announcements that are non-political, non-commercial, non-doctorian."
I see. So, so specific, so, right, so, so specific to public announcements?
Correct.
Right. And it's under Bulletin Board. I think we should note that also.
Right.
Because that's not our program. That's the community bulletin board, I would assume.
Yeah. Right. So there is just one thing I do want to clarify about the channel. It is a peg channel. It's a public education government access channel. And the district only does programming on certain days while the town does programming on other parts of the days, or other days. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be listed, or, you know, but yes, the Bulletin Board does run 24/7 when a program is not happening. So that's both district and town. School closings, things like that, things coming up, you know, things like that. So I didn't know if that needed to be noted somewhere, that it actually is a shared peg channel, and it's not specifically the district's channel. We just happen to house it in the TV studio. Because it comes off a government grant.
I think-
Actually, ask it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Garrett. That's fine.
I was just going to ask for clarification on what Bulletin Board means in the context of educational access television. That's, that's definitely, that concept is not clear to me.
Oh, sure. So Bulletin Board, so when a program is not playing, so if the band concert's not playing, if the parade's not playing, and it's just dead air, quote unquote, but before another program starts, it is just slides, it is informational things that keep the community informed, programs for seniors, the band concerts coming up, the, all these things that you would basically be single slide notices. It's not-
So in this case, it wouldn't be saying that the, that the, that the television channel is prohibited from discussing politics as, like, as you were mentioning, we currently do, but that rather specifically in the context of the Bulletin Board, there won't be any announcements made that are-
Yeah, like, we're not allowed to put up, even if Board of Ed members are running, we can't put up this person for Board of Education or this person for mayor. We don't run any ads- We don't run any ads like that.
Right. So I think, so where I was going with this is more that I think we're a little bit more descriptive in the West Orange policy than what is in uh, well, in some cases we're more descriptive than Strauss S M A and then, and in this case where it says endorses a candidate for public office is very specific in Strauss S M A. So I was just wondering if we could do some sort of combination of incorporating in um, the bulletin board piece into the Strauss S M A policy. Um, and again, that whole select one option on live programs, which, and, and Lauren, we don't do live programs, do we?
No, we do not live broadcast. It's a public access channel.
So do we just remove that whole section then?
Well, I think there's an option that says the school district's cable to, will not
Will not. So, so we'll, so we will, um, Ms. Hughes, if you just note that that it would be option one, um, on this policy. Yeah.
Um, I just want to play devil's advocate for a minute and, and say, would there ever be a time that we would need to broadcast something live in, say, an event of an emergency or something else where we would have to, you know, we wanted to get mass communication out to the community and would that be something prohibitive if we check this box on this policy? I just, I don't want to I don't want to, you know, not knowing what could happen in the future, like what, what other ways might we use this if, um, I don't want to limit us, I guess, is the
Right. If there were a town announcement, I mean, I, and I think just in terms of like the state of, like, right now, we have the state of emergency and I'm sure that that's probably plastered on our channel. It's not necessarily a live update. Um,
Right, well, we have, we have two different things. If God, you know, I, I want to say something that will never happen here, some terrible thing that happened that we needed to put on right now. We, it would be similar to a ticker on the bottom of your screen that supersedes all programming. The program would still happen. You're still going to see the band concert, you're just going to see on the bottom, you know, this is happening right now. Or we can take down the channel and put up one slide that says, this is happening right now, call here, blah, blah, blah. That's the only thing that's quote unquote, live. Because it could be updated in the moment. We don't have the capability through electronics and the station for me to physically stand in front of the camera and say, this is Long of Tisa reporting live here, blah, blah, blah. We, that does not have the cap, capability. Because it's not a cable channel, it's a PEG channel. It's a public access channel rather than a, you know, a channel two or something that we can manipulate.
That was my other question about technology as we were talking about this. So, okay, that's fine. Then I'd be fine with, uh, checking the first option on the
And we always also, we filter people to the websites.
Yeah.
I will say, check here for more updates because it is more up to date.
Right. Okay.
Um, and I also had a question on the fun, on the funded part. Um, it's the first sentence. It says, the Board of Education operates a cable television channel through the local cable television provider and a television studio that is funded, maintained and operated by the Board of Ed. I'm just making sure that's accurate, right? I think, are we still streaming through the same local channel, but it's our own separate, or how, how does it work? Is this shared?
So that's actually not entirely accurate.
Okay.
Um, it's a government grant that comes from the cable into the town. So there's really no bill purchase, per se. Um, for the town of West Orange has this government contract and one of the benefits much like how they loan us a truck to do the parade, they loan us a Comcast truck to film the parade. This is, this is the part of the deal is every twenty years, it gets revamped. This government grant, and so it's funded through the town, which is not really funded at all because it's part of their package. If that makes sense. I mean, if you wanted to, you know, build another channel, you could do that solely for Board of Education needs, but because the channel, right, because the channel in the past was the only way that people were getting their information, they had split it. So we house it in our TV studio. We have a station manager, which is my position as part of the Board of Education side and the town side is that they continue the grant access to the government. And they have three days and we have four days.
So we don't, we don't, um, there are no local funds used for the T V, TV studio?
No.
None of the, all that equipment is purchased via the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
And maintained.
Then I would say that the, the, the word funded, it would seem to me then that the word funded should be stricken from the, uh, the policy. And just say that television studio that is maintained and operated by the Board of Education.
Yes.
So strike that word funded. Mrs. Merklinger, you're just going back to your, 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 your thoughts, um, was there, was, was there, in terms of merging language? Was there, y- y- you know, was there language in the West Orange policy that you felt?
Yeah, um,
Non-commercial, non-doctrinaire? I mean, those are two unique words that are
So I, I did think to Tyree's point, you know, adding in about the bulletin board into the Strauss S M A policy. But then I also thought it was interesting and I don't know, you know, how the rest of the board feels, but under educational programming, it does give examples of what that refers to specifically. So it says educational programs produced by and or for students and it goes into a couple, there's four of them. Um, and I think it just helps give a little bit more guidance to what exactly this means for this policy. Um, so I'm wondering if we want to incorporate that into this because this really speaks more to the relationship between the town. Municipality will have access to the cable television channel and should be responsible for all municipality programming on the channel. So there's a lot more about the, working with the township, which makes sense in, in our case. But, um, specific to the actual content of educational programming. I don't see, you know, I just thought maybe our West Orange one was a little bit more, um, give a little bit more detail of what, what we would expect on, to see if someone were to look, pull up our policy and go, oh, what would I expect to see on that channel? Here, here's what it is.
And you know, just to add to that, um, the very first line on our policy. Um, it is the policy of the West Orange Board of Education to provide both educational programming and a bulletin board on town's twenty-four hour educational access television channel. You know, that's a mouthful, but that explains what this is. So I think, I think that needs to be in there somewhere too.
Okay, so let me just see here. Let's go back to the West Orange.
On our policy, the first sentence.
Yep, I see. Yep. So Mrs. Hughes, would you just make note of that, uh, for that opening line? Um, you know, to be just inserted in a, an appropriate location, maybe, maybe at the, the top of the policy? Let me see. Uh, yeah, you know, we can, um, we can kind of, uh, at a later time, Liz, um, decide where, where it makes most sense to kind of snug it into that first paragraph. Um, it would be easy enough to also, um, therefore the channel or broadcast program that is, programming that is developed by the school district uh, and our programming that has been developed for public broadcasting, for example. And then include those four bullet, those four points from the West Orange policy. Educational programming, co-curricular programs. News information programs. Does that, that sound, uh, appropriate?
Uh huh. Yes.
And, and this, it, Ms. Hughes. First of all, I, I, if, if the board would allow, I'd like to just, I'd like to just recognize, uh, you know, Elizabeth Hughes, who's on the meeting with us tonight just assisting with taking notes. By the way, Mrs. Hughes, if you, if, uh, you know, you don't necessarily have to be a silent partner here, you know, you're, you're kind of my, um, my hands on this in terms of the note taking. So if you had questions in real time for me, I think it would be certainly appropriate to ask those, but I'd just like to recognize, you know, my executive assistant, uh, Elizabeth Hughes. She's, she's been a partner with me on this with the, with the policy and has done some, some real yeoman's work, yeoman's work. Um, you know, and just keeping this stuff organized and it's been a lot of work. And so I, I'd just like to extend my, my thanks to her as well. So thank you, Mrs. Hughes. And Mrs. Hughes is choosing to be a
No, she raised her hand. I think she's giving you a virtual high five.
I got you. Okay, all right, very good. All right. Mrs. Tonakliff, having been the first, really the primary reviewer of the policy, was there anything else, um, that, that, that jumped out at you that you thought merited conversation or consideration?
Oh, you're muted, Miss Tonakliff. Sorry. It's okay.
Okay.
There you go.
No, I thought, um, no, I thought this was a good discussion and I think that the suggestions made were good ones and, um, so the only other thing would, I would love to get if there's, um, I don't actually get cable anymore, so I would love to just get a listing of um, what is actually on the channel at any given time. Is there like a schedule that you have that we could, that could be shared with the board?
Uh, yes, uh, for people out in the, in, in the audience who do still have cable, it is only available through Verizon and Comcast. It's, um, it's Comcast's thirty-six, channel thirty-six. Uh, as you might also hear referred to as TV thirty-six, as that, what it was always called, and Verizon is channel forty-five. Unfortunately, it does not come through on DirecTV or Fire Sick or any of those others because it is a government channel. Um, there are on the channel itself in the bulletin board. It does have a schedule. Um, it does change often, um, especially if we have new programming. Um, but I can get you a basic list of what is played mainly on it. Um, and then out there, the district days. This is anything that has to do with the school or education is Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. And the town is Sunday, Monday and Thursdays. So the Board of Education meetings are shown on our days, the town council meetings are shown on their days, that kind of a thing.
Can you repeat the days? I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um, thir- Tuesday, Wednesday?
Sorry, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday are the school days. And Sunday, Monday and Thursday for the town. So we get the extra day, which is nice.
Nice.
So just, I just want to recap this particular policy. So we, so we were including the little introductory line at the beginning of the policy. We're removing the word funded. We're adding the four, uh, specific pieces of information about educational programming. Um, was, and did we, did, were we adding language around non-commercial and doctrinaire to the West Orange policy or?
I think maybe the whole section about bulletin board.
Include the whole section on bulletin board? Okay. So Mrs. Hughes, just make note of that and then when we, when we're looking at the document, we can you know, kind of decide where we think it makes the most sense to kind of drop it in. And then send that out to Strauss S M A. Okay, very good.
Uh, just one last question, um, for Lauren. Um, where we're adding that first line, it's twenty-four hour educational access television. Do you suggest we change it to public access? Is that what it's called now?
It's called P E G, P E G, Public Educational, uh, Education, uh, Governmental Access Channel. So it's referred to as a P E G channel, which is different than a normal cable access channel.
Public Educational?
Public Education and Government Access Channel. P E G.
Thank you. We might as well have it. Right.
Right. And also if, if anyone ever has to talk to anyone about this and they say, oh, what's the P E G channel, you'll now know what it is.
We thank you for your expertise.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to be part of it.
I can't wait for that question to come up in Trivial Pursuit.
Right.
All right, so one day down, twelve to go.
All right, so, yeah.
Yeah, so the next one up is, um, nine, one, five, oh, school visitors and regulation. And this one was assigned to Gary. So Gary, if you had feedback before we open it up to the rest of the team?
Uh, yes, thank you. Just a couple of, actually really just one thing. Which is, so here we were, uh, we looked at both the policy and the regulation. And I noticed what looks to me like a discrepancy between the two. Um, so, uh, Dr. Kascone in particular, I'd like your feedback on this. So starting with the policy. Oh, you don't have these with you?
I, I do. I have the digital versions.
Okay, terrific. So the po- policy nine, one, five, zero.
Right.
Page two, paragraph three. Um, and then the, the start of the third line, uh, uh, just, just above that on the second line, it ends at least ten school days. So this has to do with, uh, with if a visitor is going to come to the school. Uh, they need to submit the request to the principal and director of special services at least ten school days prior to the requested observation date. In the regulation, if you switch over to regulation ninety-one fifty on page two, item C two. It refers there to an arrangement for a classroom visit should be made at least one day in advance of the intended visit. I'm not sure if this is referring to two different things or if that's a discrepancy that needs to be corrected.
I, I, it might, my sense, that's a great observation and, and my sense of it is, is that it, it could be the difference between a, a classroom visit that's associated with an I E P. Um, and, you know, and, and a classroom visit that is not associated with that. Um, but I think the spirit of it, I, I, you know, I think on some level one doesn't always necess, would not necessarily give the principal adequate time to prepare for that and the teacher. And ten, just my thought, seems overly restrictive, you know? Um, but I, what I might suggest on this one, um, Mr. Rothstein, is that ma- maybe we have, um, I, I bring this back and have Mrs. Goberd Fitzgerald weigh in on that. Um, and, and see if she has some insights to provide.
Yeah, uh, that would be appreciated. Um, I wanted to just note to the other members of the board that, um, uh, there are a couple of places throughout the, the, uh, regulation that reference other policies. And wanted to let you know that I double-checked those to make sure that the, the numbers were in fact the relevant and correct policies. Um, so that, that cross-check was done. And then there's one last thing, Dr. Kascone, I'm sorry, I forgot about one additional question. This is the last item of the regulation. Uh, so page four of the regulation, uh, uh, number four C. Um, so the, the idea in four is that, uh, if the principal is alerted to dangerous persons in the vicinity of the school. Uh, item C says to lock all school entrances other than the main entrance. So that the doors cannot be opened from the outside. And I'm not sure why the main entrance is excluded from being locked in case of emergency.
Yeah, and, and I would say that, um, that, that should just be, um, that you know, that, and I'm not going to come up with the exact wording at this time, but that, um, that the, the building should be should be secured.
In accordance with a secure, safety, security plan.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
So can, can, uh, I, I'll make a note of that here and, and can we ask, uh,
Yeah, Mrs. Hughes.
Mrs. Hughes, yeah, if you would make a note of that as well. It, I, I, I'm hoping that you're, that you see where we're looking. Uh, regulation nine, one, five, zero, item four C.
Yep, we'll take a look at that. But that, yeah, that, that's, I, that's bizarre, actually. Um, it should, you know, um, it should really just be in accordance with the district's, uh, you know, county approved school security plan or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great. And other than that, uh, actually every single item in, in the corresponding West Orange, uh, current West Orange policy twelve fifty is covered off on in the Strauss S M A policy. So, uh, you know, there were, there was really nothing lacking there.
Right. I just want to add, um, a little clarification, the difference between the one day and the ten days. Um, from my perspective is a one-day visit, is anybody coming to visit the classroom? The ten-day is coming to observe a child.
Hmm.
That's the discrepancy, that, that's the difference. So if a psychologist is coming in to observe a particular student, that's the ten-day notice. But to just come visit a classroom.
Like a parent coming to
One day. Yeah, that, that's the difference there.
Mr. Trig Scales, it's an excellent, excellent, that's, that's what Mr. Trig Scales showing off the, uh, the former assistant soup chops right there, I think. Um, i- is it, is that clear in the policy, would you say, Mr. President Trig Scales?
Um, no, maybe not clear.
Yeah.
Maybe not clear, but that, that's the, the explanation.
Classroom observation.
Yeah. It goes in.
One does say that it says a visitor requesting permission to observe the child in the classroom setting or prospective classroom setting must submit a request to the principal or director of special services at least ten days prior to the requested observation date.
Right. So that, that's.
All right.
See that, but it is under observation. Is that, I guess my question would be, does that also apply to parents who want to come and observe for IEP purposes or, as well as somebody who is, you know, a psychologist, somebody who's hired from a family school district to observe, make an observation?
I, I would think a parent can give a one day notice.
Okay.
But a professional who's coming in with the distinct purpose of observing one child, so it needs to be spelled out. So it's.
Yeah.
I think, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, uh, this, this is huge. Do me a favor. Um, make a note for us to, to pull the corresponding Strauss Sessmeh regulations as well. Um, so I can kind of look at those in hard copy and I'll, I'll loop in a couple of administrators to review these with me.
Also, I just want, I want to, oh, sorry.
Yeah, if you don't mind, um, just going back to the regulations, um, it seems a little bit antiquated on how we handle, um, visitors coming into the building. So this is more logistic wise. It's saying the principal will maintain a logbook. Um, don't we have all of our, our visitors, um?
Yeah.
Computer or computerized?
Yeah, it's a good point. It's a good point.
Like identification tags and badges. So just a lot of this seems very antiquated to me. It's not really current with how we handle things. So I'm just wondering if the regulations should reflect how we currently handle. I don't, I don't think we have a logbook anymore where parents are signing in and out. Um.
Well, I think at, at Washington, oh, well, this is just really like for picking children up early. I think there's like an actual written signature like you have to sign. I don't know if that means the same thing, or, or, you know? Um, is that only referring to students?
We're in.
The aftercare program, Melinda?
Or is that? That's just it. Like if you have a doctor's appointment or something, you just have to go in and physically log a child. But I don't think that refers to the visitors. So I don't know.
We are in, um, we are in a, um, in, in the process of of, of, of deploying the Raptor Visitor Management System in all schools. It's part of our ongoing security work. Um, and that will be completed along with other work that we're doing to comply with Elizabeth's law um, by, by the summer. So by next school year, um, all schools, including the elementary schools, will have that Raptor Visitor Management System. Presently only the secondary schools do. So in terms of the regulation, I think, let me take a look at it. It, it might make the most sense, um, to just update it to align with the, you know, the, the Raptor systems, because those, those will be implemented, um, for next school year. But I can take a look at that. But that's, I mean, that's a
Good catch.
It's a great catch. Yeah.
Also, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
One more thing, um, you know, just in looking at this policy, um, I think we want to be careful about, um, the wording and, and where we're going with some of the items with about the amount of time, especially if someone is planning to attempt to videotape a classroom for an observation for, you know, an IEP or something where they need notice. So a parent coming in even to observe a classroom, um, depending on what that is, we may need additional time because you need to get authorizations from the other parents in the classroom if that parent wrote a videotape. Um, you know, a- anything that could be litigious. Like, I just think that we, I mean, I think that's what you're going to do, Dr. C, but, um, just kind of definitely getting Kristen's take on the amount of time, um, for any type of visitation that includes some sort of type of observation.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think, I think this, this is, this, this is a policy that merits, uh, you know, some, some carefully thought out nuanced language because, you know, we certainly don't want to, um, you know, send an, send a, you know, an overt message through the, I should say, the, I don't, I wouldn't think the board would want to send an overt message through the policy that we were, um, you know, obstructionist in any, in any way. We, we want our schools to be open places. We want our parents to feel welcome and open coming. But by the same token, in the event that the administration determined that, um, perhaps the, the, the intent um, uh, was, was not above board, or, uh, there was perhaps a liability for the district that the district needed some additional time to just understand. Um, I think that, um, you know, the policy having, having the option for, for that, that timeline to be extended in order for the district to do and exercise all due diligence, you know, to, um, to make sure that it was done, done appropriately. So I think it's a, it's about kind of walking that line between sending a message that our schools are open, you know, open places and welcoming places for our parents, but at the same time leaving a provision in there that, that gives the district latitude to, to have a longer timeline in the event that it was determined that it was necessary.
And I just wanted to point out, um, uh, Ms. Merklinger, just because of the, the comment you just made, it is called out on the policy that no recording devices are permissible. Um, that's at the very bottom of page two of the policy.
Okay.
So I was just curious if that is something that happens sometimes in observation, uh, which I would be concerned about. But if it is something that actually happens, that might be a, a line that needs to be addressed as well.
It has happened in the past in West Orange. Hence why it was probably put into the policy.
And they shouldn't be, uh, shouldn't be recording anyone's child other than their own, even if we allowed it, you know?
Yeah, I would think for confidentiality in the classroom that, that that wouldn't be permitted. But I guess I'm, I'm not really an expert in, in all the circumstances where that might be, uh, necessary. So maybe that's something, you know, uh, Dr. Kaskon, if, if, uh, you could weigh in or follow up with, uh, Ms. Goberdy as well.
Right. So I think also, um, Ms. Merklinger, I think we should include, like you said, something saying, you know, that we're not allowed to record just because, um, certain things like holiday party, like Valentine's Day, parents come and bring cupcakes or bring some type of food or come to, to do some type of activity at the school. They might be recording not just their own s- child, but like kind of all together. And maybe some parents aren't, um, you know, they don't post their children's pictures on social media and things like that. So I think that definitely, um, we should include something to say, um, regardless of if there's a school, after school activity or during school. I don't know if it only refers to like, you know, classroom hours when school is in, in session.
So Melinda, we actually threw out a policy, and I think we've already adopted it la- earlier last year, um, about, uh, media and, um, getting waivers and things of that nature to allow, uh, photographs to be used, videos to be used. So I know we have a policy. I don't know the number off the top of my head. We do have an actual policy that's specific to just what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
And this would just be under, I mean, this is under classroom observation still. So this.
Okay.
For, for educational purposes and IEP purposes. The only other thing I wanted to ask about, and I think this comes from, is the second paragraph about the superintendent specifically deserves the right to deny visitors the opportunity to observe their child's class. Um, this was, uh, a very contentious issue a number of years ago. Um, and it was, it was being used to, you know, prevent parents from being in the classroom to, to visit, you know, to see what was going on and to see their child, um, who was struggling, um, and may, and so I, I just want to have clarity on that so that, um, parents feel protected, that they are able to, and I know this does state about being disruptive or distracting, but that's very vague. And I feel like the parents, you know, I want to make sure that our parents of our special needs students have, um, have the ability to, to observe their child, um, without any, you know, without any issues. I think it's important for them to see what's going on. So.
I cannot, well, I just jump in and weigh in on this because that caught my attention too when I was reading it. But I just wanted to share where I landed on this is for the safety and protection of any student in school, I was thinking that this is something that I actually really would, would want enforceable, that a building principal or the superintendent can refuse permission, uh, to enter to anyone who they have concerns about. That person has the opportunity to file a grievance with the Board of Education. And if we were then to find that the principal or the superintendent behaved inappropriately in that situation, that would probably have pretty serious ramifications. So I think there, there is a way to redress that and to ensure that it's not being used, um, egregiously. Um, but I would imagine more often there are cases where unfortunately there could be individuals who would be disruptive to a child's, um, safety or wellbeing, who are trying to gain access. And we need to trust the professionals at the, at the building to make that call. That, that's where I landed on it.
Did just say something wasn't the regulation or something with, um, regards to how a parent goes about filing a grievance or?
There's a.
A policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a policy that's specifically called public complaint grievance.
Okay.
Which would, um, you know, which would, would cover that. Um, and you know, like, and, and really you see that, like it often does. I mean, the superintendent, um, you know, holds superintendent schools holds a, you know, a fairly significant amount of decision-making authority. Um, which is really why the role of the board is so important, not only in the, uh, the hiring of the superintendent, but then the ongoing, you know, evaluation of the superintendent and, uh, monitoring of the superintendent to ensure that the superintendent is operating appropriately. Um, if you have a person in the superintendent of schools position that's, that's operating above board and in integrity and the spirit of policies and best interest of students and parents, then board has nothing to worry about, right? But, um, you know, uh, and, and the board becomes the failsafe for a superintendent that's not acting according to the spirit of the policies.
By the way, I realize the thoughts that I just shared are not because I'm smart in any way at all, but because I literally read it in the regulation and just realized that. So if you look at the regulation on, uh, page two, it's item C eight, that addresses the issue of, um, uh, of that scenario where a parent has been denied access and has a grievance and specifically calls out policy number ninety-one thirty, which is public complaints and grievances.
Okay.
Right. And I, I think it's very important, having been a principal, um, to be able to control that. In some instances, it can be very disruptive.
So I think, um, one of the things that might make it clearer or better, um, it's not that to take away the right for the superintendent or the building principal to deny the visitor. Um, but I guess maybe, um, what would be helpful is to define a little more descriptively what it means to be disruptive or distracting. Like if there's, I don't know, something a bit more in detail about what would be considered, you know, and like an example would be, you know, or something like that.
I, I think it, I think it becomes tricky, you know, um, right, Mr. Rick Scales, did you want to, I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump in there on you.
No, I, I would say if it's disrupting instruction, I think that's clear enough. The, the principal and the teacher are making the determination that the presence of that person in the classroom has become a disruption to instruction. I, I don't think we need to give examples. I, you know? I think that could be, um, left up to those professionals.
And again, and again, listen, I mean, I think that, um, you know, parents, um, I think that's, you know, parents, uh, you know, and, and we see it all the time, you know, and, and which is fine, which is, which is right, you know, that parents feel that they haven't been treated fairly. Um, now, I will say this, that you know, that, that different parents, there are different levels of comfort and, and familiarity with advocating. Right? Um, but I would say that certainly I, you know, the, our administrative team, myself as the superintendent, um, you know, we avail ourselves to our community whenever they need us, you know, whenever, whenever they need to reach us. And, um, certainly, you know, um, when parents feels that they haven't necessarily been treated fairly, um, on, on, say on the building level, they always have the option to, you know, to address that, appeal that to the, to the, you know, the superintendent. You know, we, and, and as a superintendent, I evaluate those, um, th- those concerns, those allegations, um, you know, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, impartially. Right? And, um, if there are grievances or, or, or justified, then, then they're addressed as such. And that's, and that's the, and that's the transactional process in a school district that builds trust. Um, is, you know, when, when community members, whomever, um, you know, realize that things aren't going to swept under the rug, they should, you know? And, and if there's a grievance that has, has validity, it's going to be addressed, it's going to be dealt with. Um, and, um, you know, when an organization operates in that manner, then I think that builds trust, um, that people feel the process isn't going to let them down, right?
Thank you.
All right. Um, so I think, does anyone else have any other thoughts before we move on to the next policy? All right. So the next one is nine, one, eight, one, volunteer coaches. Um, that was mo- one of mine. Um, really just, I had two thoughts on this. Um, one, I just, I, Scott, I didn't know if we had run this by the high school athletic director and principal. Um, just to get their thoughts, since the majority of our volunteer coaches do fall at, at the high school, I think. Um, and for co-curricular activities as well. Um, I think the majority fall, uh, at the high school level. Um, so I, I didn't know if we had the opportunity to get their input on that. And if not, could we or should we have them take a look at it? Um, because there are, one of the things that struck me was, um, it looked like assistant coaches could have, uh, volunteer assistant coaches. And I don't know that we have assistant coaches for assistant coaches.
Where did you, where did you see that, Mr. Merklinger?
Um, so it says, um, volunteer, uh, so on page one, I, number one, it says volunteer athletic coaches and volunteer co-curricular activity advisors and assistants may serve only under the direction of under the direction and immediate supervisor of a head and or assistant coach or activity advisor or assistant employed by the board. So it makes it seem like a volunteer coach could be under an assistant coach, which I don't know that we do. And I don't know if we do that for, um, our cr- extracurricular activities either. Um, so I was just curious if, if we had had the opportunity to have, um.
Yeah. And, and I, I think, I think this, this, um, yes, and I, I think this gives, gives a, a little bit more flexibility. So I'll give you an example. So let's take football. The football team is an example, um, where, you know, you have a, a fairly large staff. Um, and while a volunteer might most of the time, you know, be working with the head coach, there are going to be times when, you know, that volunteer might be helping out with the offensive line or helping out with the defense, right? And, and so I think it gives a little bit of flexibility that, that an assistant coach has the, has the, the ability under board policy to do that. So it actually, it protects the board and gives the coaching staffs a little bit more flexibility. Um, I think in this policy, um, it's pretty straightforward. I think for this one, and this is, this is an interesting little sidebar here, is it's one thing to to, to promulgate a policy. And that's where really in many ways, the board's responsibility ends. But the, the heavy lifting is now taking these policies, making sure that the, the associated staff members administration is aware of the nitty gritty of the policy and that our administrative procedures are aligned with it, right? So we talk about, you know, this idea of, um, I think it says something about a code of conduct, right? Um, you know, parent prolegate rules of conduct for volunteer, you know, um, y- y- you know, given it, so, you know, just, you know, just circling back and making sure that we in fact have that. Are we reviewing that code of conduct? Is it current? Do we want to add anything to it? Is it being given to the coaches? Are they signing that? So it, there, there's, but as a policy, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward and, um, and the, uh, the athletic director and principal didn't have any additional feedback on it.
Okay.
Yep.
That was all I had. I don't know if anyone else had any questions.
Um, I actually had a question at the end, all the way at the end. This is all school volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular, like, curricular activity advisors. This, this must obtain a criminal history record check. Um, should we include like, um, this is, um? this is, um, I mean, I guess that would include anything with, um, like sexual harassment or any type of record. It's, is it automatically included or do we have to specify?
Um, well, the, 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 the criminal check, um, so, so I think there's two layers for that. There, there's the, there's kind of the personal reference piece. Whereby, you know, that person's, you know, you know, that we understand and know this person to be a, a person in, in good standing and good character. And that's ascertained through, you know, through, through the, you know, through the kind of the more reference checking um, of that person. The criminal background check, we would not, would not pick up something like sexual harassment unless, you know, unless they had been somebody arrested or charged for that. Because the background check just picks up, you know, obviously arrests, um, you know, uh, certainly incarcerations, something of that nature, um, you know, they're, they're required to get fingerprinted. And, uh, the New Jersey Department of Education runs that through, through their database. So it's sort of like a combination of, you know, personal references, professional references combined with the criminal background check. Uh, but typically we don't, when, you know, what I've seen with volunteers is typically volunteers are known people. You know, they're not folks who just kinda, you know, happen to stroll off the street. They're, you know, they're, they're people who, you know, a lot of times they're former students or, um, people that are sort of known. So those two things together is how we ensure that we have, you know, people who are appropriate to be working with children.
So are we, uh, advancing this policy without change?
I'm comfortable with that.
Alright, good. I'm just, uh, keeping a scorecard here.
Mrs. Hughes will make note of that. Please.
Okay, the next one up is nine one nine zero community organizations. Um, the policy and the regulation. And that was Gary.
Yes, thank you. So I actually, I, I thought the policy and the regulation were fine. What got a little bit confusing for me is that the, um, the corresponding, the allegedly corresponding West Orange, um, policy doesn't really seem to be talking about the same topic. So, so he- here's the, here's the issue that I've got is either there are different policies. Um, a- and they don't really correspond to each other. Or we really do need to add a lot to the Strauss Sessmey policy from the West Orange policy. The, the Strauss Sessmey policy talks at a very high level and a vague level of different types of community organizations that might possibly be of benefit to the educational programs in West Orange. The West Orange policy twelve thirty really seems to be speaking more about, you know, it's called school connected organizations. It's more organizations like parent teacher organization, uh, parent, uh, uh, parent teacher association, uh, that have really a different kind of interaction with the schools than the community organizations that the Strauss Sessmey policy is speaking about. Um, I, I did a search trying to find something in Strauss Sessmey that addressed the PTA type organizations the way the West Orange policy does. And I didn't find that. It's not that it doesn't exist, but I didn't find it. Uh, Cheryl, I see you motioning. Do, do you have something that might clear this up?
No, I, I, um, I'm laughing to myself because I, um, I saw exactly what you said, but then I tried to take a different perspective on it and I realized, um, how they are kind of similar. Um, even though they're worded a little bit differently, but I think the intent, um, maybe, um, and, and definitely, you know, everyone, if you feel differently, but I think the intent is to recognize that there are organization, community organizations that can assist the school um, from an educational standpoint. And I think that's what the intent, and that's where I think the West Orange is just worded as school connected organizations with the, they, that intent of, um, these organizations building relationships within, not only there's the community, but the, our school system. Um, and just putting some parameters about that interaction. So our West Orange one, I think is a little bit more in depth or a little bit more detailed versus the Strauss Sessmey, that's just very, um, general.
Well, although something that I see as a, as a big difference is in the West Orange policy twelve thirty, there's mentions of processes, for example, of, of the outside organization, holding meetings within the schools. Which is not something that necessarily a community organization described in the Strauss Sessmey policy would do with any sort of regularity. That wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. But rather that there might be resources in the community, organizational resources in the community that could either provide resources or provide a guest speaker or provide something in a very limited capacity that, that directly benefits an educational program.
I guess I saw like, um, from the Strauss Sessmey perspective that those community organizations could not state it here that they can use school facilities to hold meetings, but that doesn't mean they couldn't ask to do that. So I guess that's why I was saying the Strauss Sessmey one's a little bit more generalized versus the West Orange one that takes the Strauss Sessmey one, but puts, makes it a little bit more granular.
So maybe to, to be a little bit more, more clear in, in what I'm saying here, because there may not be a problem here at all. I think the Strauss Sessmey policy is probably completely fine the way it's written and same thing with the regulation. I'm not sure that we need to import the specificity from the West Orange policy that speaks directly to, um, uh, to organizations like PTA type organizations. Uh, I'm not sure that that's required or that, that, that it's even helpful. Um, you know, but again, just sort of opening it up to if anyone had a different take on this than I did, because I don't really see, uh, it, it really made me wonder if there was a different Strauss Sessmey policy that had to do, there was a better match for West Orange policy twelve thirty. I searched and I didn't find it. I don't know if I'm just missing it or if it doesn't exist.
True. Well, Gary, I, I agree with you in that these are two different things. One, I see the community organizations, those are like our partners, people who want to help us in some way. The other one, ours, I see clearly as PTA or an organization just like the PTA, because even the last line makes reference to, you know, a member can be designated to serve as the advisor, um, where we start to talk about that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wonder like groups like Boy Scouts, you know, they, they are a community organization, but they are connected to our school district. Um, the West Orange African American heritage, you know, they tutor in our elementary school. So I think there is kind of a, a tie between these two policies. And while they might be worded differently, I think there's a lot that, um, maybe we can do to maybe combine them since there isn't.
That's what I was gonna say. I, I think both of them have a role to play, that's my opinion. Have a role.
It, it, Mr. Triggs, you know, if I might just weigh in? Um, just from kind of the administrative perspective, I would agree. I, 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 I see the second, the, the West Orange policy. Um, and I think even if you look at the, you know, the opening line of it, it kind of defines, school connect, or of parents, guardians, school staff and friends of the school and each school. I mean, that's, that's in essence is describing a PTA, right? Um, because in a PTA meeting, you'd have the principal, you'd have parents, you could have folks who aren't parents but are just interested in serving, and you could have staff all participating in a meeting. And I think the difference is, is that I think that this policy helps to establish, parameters, um, for the, the role of a PTA a- as it relates to school matters. And I think that's important. You know, and, and I think that, you know, a, you know, the Boy Scouts, just as, as the other example, I, I don't think whatever, I don't, I don't think they operate in such a way where they would ever, there would ever really be an opportunity or an impetus for them to, um, get involved in development of program or pol- in a program or procedure or content in the school. But I think that, that can be a pitfall for a PTA. And I think that this policy serves as, as, as I would argue, just kind of a healthy, a healthy li- line of demarcation between the PTA and the school administration.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt just one second. It just occurred to me to try a different type of a search, and I think I found what I was looking for and not finding before this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, which is that there is a policy in Strauss Sessmey ninety two ten called parent organizations. And as I'm looking through that right now, I think that that aligns much more directly to West Orange twelve thirty, uh, school connected organizations. So I'm just taking a moment to look at that right now. Um, and, and I think that that might cover off on what we're looking for in terms of, uh, a PTA or PTO. As a distinct policy from ninety one ninety community organizations.
Mr. Rothstein, that policy, parent organizations, where does that fall within our, our, our four columns? Is it something we've already uh, adopted?
Funny, I was hoping you would be able to answer that question. Um, I, I don't know.
Okay.
There's also, um, Mr. Rothstein, there's a reference to, in the West Orange policy, to a different policy, uh, permission to hold regular meetings in accordance with policy number thirteen thirty.
Yeah, that would be referring to, um, another currently adopted West Orange policy. And I, I didn't look at that.
I can't pull it up on my end, so that's why I thought you might have looked at it or.
No, I didn't.
See, that's most wording cannot change, ninety two ten. Parent organizations.
And we already, we already adopted it.
No, we did not.
We did not adopt it. Okay. Uh, Mrs. Hughes, would you do me a favor? And just, just, just flag that, that parent organization policy, the number again, Mrs. Merklinger?
Ninety two ten.
Ninety two ten. Um, and just, just kind of, kind of pair it with the West Orange policy, which is twel- twelve thirty. That, I, that's gonna fall into the, that seventy five to a hundred policies we still need to work on. Um, this ninety one ninety, however, pretty straightforward. What is the words?
Ninety one ninety, I believe is pretty straightforward and I, I had no problem with, uh, with the language in the policy or the regulation.
I agree.
Okay. So we'll move that forward.
So just to restate then, ninety one ninety, no changes required. We'll move that forward for adoption. But we're going to make sure that in reviewing policy ninety two ten, which was not on tonight's agenda, that we'll make sure to compare that to West Orange policy twelve thirty.
Correct.
Good stuff.
So moving on, right on special interest groups, ninety seven hundred, which was also Gary.
Aren't you guys lucky? Cause, so here's another instance where, um, I, so ninety seven hundred, you know, actually, let me know my, my questions first and then I'll get into my issues with the discrepancies between it and the, and the West Orange policy. On page two, in the first paragraph. So this has to do with, um, the prohibition of basically political campaigning on campus.
Is this in the West Orange or the Strauss Sessmey policy?
Uh, Strauss Sessmey, Strauss Sessmey ninety seven hundred.
Oh, sorry.
So the board prohibits the distribution of political literature, blah, 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 blah. So on line three, if any candidate for election at any annual school election. And that phrase caught my attention because it seems to focus specifically on school elections as opposed to any other type of election, municipal or state or, uh, or, or county or, or federal. Um, it continues, or the adoption of any bond issue proposal or any public question submitted in any general municipal or school election. Uh, so it's just the wording that I found a little curious. And again, I'm wondering if anyone's reading it differently than I am. Or if there's a reason that they call out annual school election as opposed to the election of any candidate.
I, I kind of read it as, um, prohibits the distribution of political literature at all, you know, completely. And then because we are the school district, they just wanted to reiterate, even if it is, um, an annual school election, you still can't do it. That, that's the way I read it.
And I guess again, so what I'm reading particularly is, uh, is prohibits the distribution of political literature to or through the students of this district and school buildings or on school grounds that promotes favors or opposes the candidacy of any candidate for election at any annual school election.
Maybe the insertion of language for, for, uh, the, of any candidate, um, for election, including, but not limited to annual school elections.
Or I'm thinking, or just striking that phrase at any annual school election. Uh, could we just say oppose, uh, that promotes favors or opposes the candidacy of any candidate for election.
I think going back to Ms. Triggs' scale's point, with it, the, the omission of the annual school election may lead people to say, well, they couldn't possibly meet the annual school election. They need a presidential election or, uh, you know, or, or the, you know, the gubernatorial campaign or what have you, right? I almost feel like, like it needs, because in other words, like that's probably the most likely case of political literature distribution would be the school election. So I, 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 I almost feel like it merits naming that specifically, but I think it's, this wording almost seems as if, if it's any other election, it's okay.
Exactly. That's what jumped out at me.
Right.
Okay, so, so maybe changing the wording to say something along the lines of, uh, any candidate for election, including, uh, uh, including candidates for school election or candidates for school board.
So what about municipal or presidential?
Yeah, all of them.
I think all of it, yeah.
Oh, so just say all of it.
Well, then just go back. So we have a, a town ordinance, I think, or I'm not sure what the town ordinance or what the rule is, but you can't, um, distribute political literature within a hundred feet or so of a school facility or s- school building, right? That you can't campaign for any election. Um, to school, so I, um, obviously this to kids, but, um, you, you know, just thinking about our own personal elections, right? If you went to back to school night and hidden outlet or, or, and, um, you just even our town council elections, um, we have limitations on how far you can be from a school. So, or from a school fac- on a school facility. So I'm just wondering if we say that there's no political literature distribution for any election, are we then saying um, any candidate that, any political candidate that comes into West Orange cannot be on any school ground facility if we change this language? Ever, or regardless of how close or whatever distance they are, you know, so I'll use Edison, for example. Um, if you were across on the field, you're within a hundred feet right from the front of the school building, but you're still on school grounds. So you, and if we take out any of this language, if we add in this language to limit it, we wouldn't be allowed, no one could give out literature at Edison.
This is referring specifically to distribution to or through students. So I, I don't think it, it's general, uh, I, I don't think it applies to.
I just want to make sure we're not limiting anything.
Yeah, the, the way that I'm reading this, you know, again, going back to the first sentence, prohibits the distribution of pro- pro- uh, political literature to or through the students of this district in school buildings or on school grounds. So I think the idea is just sort of protecting students from getting them involved in the political fray. Now that in and of itself, I don't know exactly what the legalities are for First Amendment rights and saying students aren't allowed to, uh, to do this. I, I, I'm, I'm not really sure, um, what that is. But, but i- i- it's clear to me that this isn't speaking about general candidacy and campaigning. It's specifically, uh, through students.
Right. And see, that's why I think it's about school elections, because it's happening at school with students. That, that's why I think it's framed this way.
They don't mean school board elections. They mean school elections like.
Annual school election.
And I'm a little confused, because, um, yeah, do they mean school board members or like, I don't know, no, not so sure now. Are we talking about school board? I'm sorry.
Can we get clarification back from what exactly this paragraph is in reference to or? What exactly this paragraph is in reference to or?
Right.
Cause I think we're starting to all question it and go in different directions with it.
Right. I feel like we're wrong.
I, I, um, you know, I, I, I can look, I can ask them. I'm almost, I'm almost certain that they, that this refers to. Um, school board election.
Okay.
This is, I would not think that this would be, you know, for example, you know, a student council, you know, or a class officer election.
I thought it was like, wait, they can't campaign for their own.
This is, this is, this is annuals, this is a school, this is the annual. I mean, they really should, but we, we could look into, we, I can follow and make sure that, that that means annual school board election. Um, and just confirm that it would seem to me that it would make sense to just add the word board and it would eliminate the. Things, it would make it a lot more clear, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
We can, I can follow. Yeah, I can follow up with Strauss S.
You know, we don't vote on, vote on our budget. It's only the school board.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we, we can follow up on that.
Okay, that'd be great. And then besides that, there was also, you know, a- a- again, I had a little trouble. Aligning the relevance of, uh, West Orange policy sixteen hundred. Um, to stress estimate policy ninety seven hundred. There are another number of items in West Orange policy sixteen hundred that. Are, are just not covered, um, that I think are good things to maintain in policy somewhere. I'm just not entirely sure that it belongs in this policy. So for example, looking at, uh, at sixteen hundred. The second paragraph. Uh, uh, has to do with, um, establishing relationships between local colleges and universities for student teachers. Is that really a special interest group? I don't think it is. I think it probably. Belongs in a different policy and might even be covered in a different policy. That again, I, I failed to find in my search before, but I'm gonna try it again because my head seems to be more clear tonight. Um, but there's a number of other items like charter schools. Uh, again, this is in the West Orange policy sixteen hundred, um, donations by private organizations. These are just not touched on. In policy. Uh, uh, ninety seven hundred. So I'm not sure the relevance, uh, really meshes.
And I would imagine that there's within stress estimate, certainly as it relates to. Donations, I can't imagine that there isn't a policy that's related specifically to donations that would end up in the. In the finance section of the policy manual.
Yeah.
That is harsh. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, yeah, there, there is a policy, uh, stress estimate policy ninety five forty one, student teachers slash interns.
Right.
That does refer to maintaining the relationship, uh, the Board of Education, maintaining the relationship with colleges and universities. So maybe that's fine. We can, we can ignore that one. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm just checking charter schools also.
Do we, I guess I'm surprised by the, the language in the fourth paragraph. Um, about raising funds on school premises. Um, will be granted only to those persons, organizations whose purposes are consistent with the goals of this district. You know, like a PTA or, um, you know, the Boy Scouts or something like that, but I'm thinking this. This seems like a larger, I feel like this particular policy. Um, feels like larger groups when they talk about special interest groups. To me, that's, you know. Big lobbyists and things like that, smaller, you know. Organizations that are in our town.
There is, by the way, policy fifty eight thirty, stress estimate fifty eight thirty is student fundraising and is very specific about, uh. Uh, about the circumstances where students can be involved in fundraising.
Yeah, my sense of the, this West Orange policy is that it's, it's different in spirit from the stress corresponding stress estimate policy. And that virtually every component piece of the West Orange policy. Resides in other Strauss estimate policies that in fact are probably more detailed within that topic.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that and. I feel like, uh. You know, again, like I think the language in ninety seven hundred. Is probably pretty good, except for that one issue, uh, or that one question about which type of elected officials and maybe. Modifying that language a little bit. And, uh, I, I feel pretty confident that. The West Orange policy sixteen hundred, the items in that that are not addressed in policy ninety seven hundred are almost certainly addressed elsewhere. Um, I, I just, uh. Uh, I'm continuing to click through and check to make sure I'm finding those references elsewhere in Strauss estimate.
Right. And I just wanted to point out ninety seven hundred, the last sentence talks about, um. Any organization, group, activity, club, association. Blah, 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 that is not approved or sponsored by the Board of Education. So to Jennifer's point. The, this is somebody outside our normal partnership that we do business with. That have special interests. So. This is clearly different than, um. Our board policy here.
So I'll follow up with, um, we'll follow up with Strauss estimate about that election question on this one.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, that's really the only, uh. The only real issue with it.
So the next one is seventy five ten, use of school facilities and regulation. Um, this was assigned to me. Um, this one has a lot of work that needs to be done, Dr. C. Um, because the regulation's completely blank and so is the policy. So there's a lot of like.
One are you looking at? I'm sorry. What was that? I missed.
Seventy, seventy five, seven, five, one, zero, use of school facilities. Um, I know our West Orange policy was very detailed and done very thoroughly when it was created. Um, so, you know, I would like to ensure that we're incorporating all the items that are in it. Um, but there are a lot of blanks that we have to fill in and I don't know if maybe the best way to go about this is to sit down with. Um, the principals and, uh, the athletic director before going through these or, or how we want to handle or jump on this after C. Um, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we've decided the very, the second paragraph, it says the board will permit the use of school facilities. And such permission has been requested in writing has been approved by the, and I believe we've kind of, um, gone through that. It's on, I don't want to say it's on a case by case basis, but that, um, you are as the chief school administrator. Um, would be the one that signs off. Um, but there's different, um, items in our West Orange policy such as we read about the fees.
Yeah, yeah, this, this one, this one's gonna, this one's gonna, um, I think what, what we're gonna find is, is we, as we start to. You know, whittle down to these last number. There are some that are going to kind of shake out as requiring. More additional work than others. And I think this is a good example because. You know, this is one where, you know, I want to take a critical look at it. I think that there are, there are good aspects in the West Orange policy. That are worth, you know, um, transferring over into the Strauss estimate policy. But admittedly, it's going to require some additional focus on my part. And I think the suggestion of engaging. A relevant members of the administrative team, principals, the athletic director. Um, our, 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 um, buildings and grounds office through which the facilities permits go. Makes good sense on this one.
Yeah, and I might also suggest, um, the Western recreation department.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Um, um, touch on this since it is, our school facilities are shared with the township. Um, but yeah, to, to your point, there's like the application processes in here. I know we've updated, you know, um, that there is information about insurance and identification. So, um. What, you know, in the interest of time, I think this is definitely one that we shouldn't focus on necessarily tonight.
Okay.
Board to go through, but maybe, um, to your point. Um, engage those other parties first to go through this and take a critical eye to it and then bring it back for discussion.
Agreed.
Um, I don't know if anyone else had any thoughts about it. Um.
I, two things I wanted to mention, uh, one on page two, it does talk about political activity. You know, we were just having that conversation before about candidates being on school property. That's a piece that's there. Um, and the other thing is, um, where do we stand with? I know it talks about commercial use, but where do we stand if a, um. If a scout came to us and said, we want to do a commercial on the high school football field. On a Saturday, when you're not using it, we'll pay you two thousand dollars. What do we say? Based on our policy, we say, no, we can't do it. Is that?
But as far as I, and, and, um, Dr. C told me for months, but they still have to go through the process like anyone else would to use the facilities. And.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. We, we, you know, we, then we, you know, if they're paying customer. Um, provided that the, you know, the entity and the, and the endeavor is. Uh, not something that would reflect negatively on the board, then, you know, we would allow them to go through the permit process. One of the, um, the changes I made is that, um. You know, all permits start with me. Um, I don't sign them, but I review them. Um, and then release them to the building level. If it's something that, you know, I, that I even want the principals to consider. Because what would happen before was start with the building principles. And the building principal might sign off on it and then it would get to me. And if I had an issue with it, then. Then it had gone through all that process. And in some cases. I would argue wrongly so, the requester of the permit. Saw my signature as a rubber stamp. And had moved forward with their preparations in the case of filming. You know, move forward their production planning and things of that nature. And then when it got to me, I said, well, wait a second. It said, I, you know, this is, you know, this is, uh, particularly during COVID. It came up during COVID because. I was not really, you know, as comfortable with approving permits during COVID as it was previously. And so as a result now, they all start with me. I just give them a little check like, yep. And then it becomes to the building principal to say, are they able to support it on the, on the site base level? Um, so even that particular change that I've made in the quality control process should probably be reflected in the policy. Or at least in the regulation.
In peace to that is that, um, none of our town. Um, activities. Get bumped by someone coming in just because they're paying. So we wouldn't kick off a soccer game. Um, just because someone wants to come into.
That's correct. That's correct. They, they have to work around. Um, you know, they have to work around or obviously our scholastic athletics or, or. Yeah, exit correct.
Um, the other part of that question is, is the, is the town involved at all? And with the issuance of a permit? Or is that clearly through you, Dr. C?
Get all they, you know, all the, you know, recreation, all those organizations submit permits. Um, to, to the, the buildings and grounds office and then, you know, they go through our process.
Okay, I know, I know some towns where the commercials are so lucrative. Now that they're, they're requiring that they get a permit from the town also. So that's why I'm asking.
And what I was gonna say is that, um, you know, we may want to work with. Buildings and grounds. We have some fabulous facilities and put together a rate card that. If we do start getting solicited and get solicited regularly. That it takes into account any custodians that might need to be there, um, overtime, all of those kinds of things. And then, you know, it's like, oh, you want to rent our fifth football field? Here's our rate card. You can, you know, let us know if this is within your budget and we'd be happy.
Something like that, Jennifer. Um, we actually do have, um. That, that is all, just, just because of my own experience and, and having to set up a lot of events in town. We actually do have that where it's, um, you have to incorporate into the cost for security, the cost for custodians. Overtime for custodians, how many custodians, what, um, pieces, if you want restrooms opened, things like that. So we actually do, um. It does get all incorporated into the costs.
Right. So what I'm saying is it should also not incorporate those things, but have, you know, here's the rate. And then that is inclusive, like you're not just gonna bill for the custodians, you're gonna bill for the space as well. So. But that, all of that stuff should be taken into account.
And there, and Ms. Dunnecliff, there, there are, and this is, it's a great point and, and, um. The rates are not particularly lucrative, right? You know, now, um, you know, i- i- and it may. It may be worthwhile putting something in where, you know, the, 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 uh, the rental fee, uh, may be. Um, maybe negotiated, um, you know, between the, the permit, the requestor of the permit and. The superintendent of schools and business, business office. Cause right now, it's, you know, you're a production company. It's a steal. You're, I mean, it is an absolute steal. I mean, and, and that's part of the reason why they. You know, they, they come to public schools because the, the, the cost of location. Uh, is far cheaper typically, right, than it is. So. Um, and I would argue that it's not actually presently, from a financial standpoint, really worth our while. When we consider the deployment of our resources and our, and our staff and. It's just, it's, it's really not, there's not a lot of upside presently with the current fee structure.
But I'm saying make it an upside, you know?
Absolutely. No, absolutely. I got it. Totally.
Now, I have another question in terms of with the rate card. Is that like public knowledge? Is that posted somewhere? Is that information available through the school? Is it through the town? How does one, you know, even consider?
When you apply for the permit.
It's, it's right presently, it's, it's a good question. I don't, I don't. This, Mrs. Flowers, this might be something you, you may want to follow up on. Um, as to whether that rate, you know, that permit and that rate sheet is, is on the website under the business office. Um, and.
I actually have some info on that, um, because I take care of that for the auditorium and for some spaces in the school. It is on the permit itself. Um, they still have to fill out an in triplicate. Paper format, uh, permit. So it's not just online. So all of the, I see you're shaking your head. Um, all of the permit information is on the back, including the rates for, um. Other staff, including like media staff and if media equipment, if they use the auditorium or some inside. Um, facilities as well as the outdoor facilities.
Yeah. So they would get the information after they've applied for the permit?
When they get the permit, basically they're sent the permit, like they, they call to inquire. We then send them a permit. Um, they inquire about dates while we're, we're inquiring about dates. They're filling out their permit and they're sending it back. And then usually there is a representative who like discusses the rates with them. I do that for like the auditorium and the gyms and the inside stuff. So I'm assuming someone on the athletic side does that with the fields outside.
Yeah, I think it like, it, it's, I put on my development hat and think about things that are done in the higher ed. Sphere where you actively, you know, or you, you have packages, you have things that are available so that you're. Utilizing your resources to the fullest extent and that when they're not being used, which is not a whole lot of time. West Orange, because we have a very active, uh, community. But if there are times that we can. You know, make some revenue from it. It's another stream of revenue to help us, you know. Balance the budget, right?
And I also think that if the information was made available before somebody applies for a permit, right? So that they can even take it into consideration to, you know, that this is something feasible. Like, let's go through the process of getting the permit because we know that this is something that we can, you know.
Right. The only, the only. Um, the only thing I see about that is that we do have, or I shouldn't say we, but Dr. C has the ability to. We fees, which he, um, in the past, I know superintendents have brought it back to the board to discuss if we want to waive a fee or. Lower a fee. So, um, I wouldn't want to put out the fees and, and scare someone off. Without them thinking that they have the ability to negotiate it potentially.
Well, I mean, I guess, I think that we can add that tidbit then as well, like, is, like in certain cases, price is negotiable or whatever it is. If it aligns, or I don't know.
I think people that we're gonna give a deal to are gonna be connected to our community in some way. It's somebody who's known to one of us or has a, it's. It's the production companies that, you know, Dr. Cascone mentioned that have the money to.
That's what I was talking about. I just want to remind us as a time check.
Thank you.
It is eight fifty. And we're on number six. So just, just keep that in mind.
I'm sure the next seven are gonna go very quickly.
Yeah. Um, okay. So takeaway there is there's a lot more to be done on the facilities. Um. The next policy is two, four, three, one, athletic competition. Um, again, this is one where, uh, Dr. C, I was wondering if the athletic director, um. And principals had taken a look at it only because our West Orange policy is. And principals had taken a look at it, only because our West Orange policy is very um. Goes into more depth about um including all students, not just um. And it goes into, you know, parental consent, academic eligibility, um special education students. Um, I don't know, and Gary, I don't know if you know this, if there is a regulation that goes with athletic competition? Because this is one of those policies where the West Orange policy is very specific, and I wonder if some of this is regulation.
I'm gonna check that right now. I'm not sure.
Um, but it goes into things like good sportsmanship. Um, and so I just wonder if. If there's a way that we can incorporate, um, what is, I mean, the West Orange one is very much more in depth. Um, than what is in um the Strauss S M A. So that was my concern is I don't want to miss some of the items um that are noted in our West Orange policy that seems to have been done very thoroughly.
And I might add, not that long ago.
Right.
Comparatively speaking.
The the regulations that are associated with twenty four thirty one are twenty four thirty one point one, point two. And point four that have to do with emergency procedures, medical examination. And prevention of sports related concussions and head injuries. So um much more specific along those lines.
Yeah, because our West Orange one goes into about insurance, um sudden cardiac arrest, um physical examinations. So I'm wondering if we maybe need to take this one back, Dr. C, and look at the stress estimate regulations and compare them.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Can you repeat those regulations, Gary, please?
Uh, yes, sure.
This is the Strauss S M A regulation, right?
Strauss S M A regulations, yes. Uh, so there's a two, four, three, one point one. Two, four, three, one point two. And two, four, three, one point four. We don't know what happened to point three, but I would recommend that we all look for it the rest of tonight.
I don't know if anyone else had any other um questions about this one, but. Um, I that was my takeaway was that I noticed that there's a lot of information on our West Orange policy. That's not in the Strauss S M A and and again, um, wondered if it needs to go into regulations.
Yeah.
Which column is this under? I'm sorry. We should check that also.
The mandated.
All right, so we'll note this one is uh maybe requiring some uh. A deeper dive into regulation and and overview by administration.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or thoughts before we move on?
No, but before I forget, I just wanted to note to uh to Ms. Hughes that I'm going to send you my notes as well afterward, just to maybe correlate with yours after the meeting.
Right.
She raised her hand. She gave the virtual high five to you.
The next one up is by lot and um number uh zero, one, four, three point two student representatives. Um and regulation. Um, and this was, this was uh Jennifer.
Which number was it? Sorry.
Representation on the Board of Ed.
I got it. Yep. The first paragraph, one of the thoughts I had, and I wanted to run it by all of you was. I know we always, it says high school senior students, and I didn't know the background on that, so I wanted to. Understand that a little bit. Somebody trying to say something? Sorry. Um, and then I was wondering if there would be any benefit to having. You know, a two year term where a student would come in as a junior and then you'd have sort of a junior and a senior. Which gives some opportunity to juniors for leadership positions.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to just run that by you all. And um. And then I think it said, the term in the West Orange policy states September to June. And in the, I think in the this Strauss S M A policy, it said it was. At the start of the reorg meeting. So I just think we need to decide which one it is. Um, I I personally think a September to June works nicely because it's that school year waiting to January when you're halfway through the year. I don't think it's as robust for students.
I I just want to share something. I know that Sandra Mordecai um was instrumental. In pushing to get student reps. And if you note the date on this, this is twenty eighteen. This this just happened. So I would hate for us to mess with this one too much, the the West Orange one. Um, here it talks about being eleventh or twelfth grade student. Um, and it it's very specific here and and I I I think this has worked well for us. So in as much as um Strauss S M A is slightly different. I think what we have is is well done and recently done.
I I I definitely agree with you on that. Um, but I just wonder um. About the selection process. Um, so, uh, you know, Sarah assessment, I think it says um. Are pointed by the principal principal, um where our West Orange policy, I think it's um. Well, I'm not sure if it's in the policy, but I know it is by student vote. Um, so I'm wondering if we want to look at how that, how it's being uh the selection is handled. Um, so in our West Orange policy, it says student selections will be made by the building principals at the end of each academic year. And each student will vote on two candidates. Um, all appointments shall require a final approval of the superintendent and Board of Education. So I'm wondering, you know, and this is, this is just my, you know, just a discussion. I don't recall. Um, you know, it was, I think it's kind of similar to the way um hiring is done. Um, where Scott makes a recommendation and and we agree and we can question, ask questions. Um, but I'm wondering if there is more of a time for a meet and greet of the of the candidates. Um, with the Board of Ed prior to uh a selection being made.
I personally would like to leave that up to the principal. Who knows the students far better than than we do. Um, are you suggesting Cheryl that we would? Select who we want?
No, I'm saying, um, kind of almost like when we select coaches where, you know, or um hire, you know. Any type of hiring and maybe this is just my HR side coming out. Um, you know, where you, I don't want to say we necessarily interview them, but get to meet them and, you know, share our input. And so if we. If there were, you know, five candidates and we felt two were stronger than some of the others, not that we were taking the um decision away from. Um, of principal or um from Scott as a superintendent, but just, you know, our our thoughts on it. Um, with ultimately the principal and and um Dr. C making the decision.
Well, I think this is a student. I mean, I think the point of this is that the student body chooses who they are through a vote. I think there's initially. The principal just, you know, makes some recommendations and then the students vote on it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's really happening. If it's more of a popularity contest and that all parties are being represented. So and and this is nothing against our our student, um, our student representatives, um, because I do think they do a great job. But I don't know if they um, you know, and and similar to to any committee where you want to have various perspectives. Um, coming from all walks of life and all walks of um engagement and experiences. So. Um, I'm just wondering if we want to just, you know, I'd be curious to know who else, you know, had applied for the position or um. You know, similar to, I guess, to any type of role that you that, you know, even just like our roles on Board of Ed, we have, we, you know. Uh apply to get elected, right? So we're we're putting ourselves out there. So I just wonder if that's just an so an opportunity. Um, to get to meet to candidates and and have some input prior to you coming on the board. Like I said, just a discussion point, not to say that there's anything wrong with the current process, just another perspective. Um, like I said, I think my, you know, my HR hat came on with this one, so.
So so here, so let me add a little insight here. So I I think. I think it's really more about, and and I think the West Orange policy. I- i- in that it it kind of, and not suggesting that it it should, but I think that the West Orange policy. Provides, you know, some 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 parameters, some 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 characteristics. Um, now, of course, they're more along the lines of. Y- y- you know, of like, you know, things like, you know, being an eleventh or twelfth grader. But I think it kind of comes down to is like, what, what kind of students do you, the, does the board want to have as student liaison? What what do you, what what do you, what perspective are you looking for students to bring? Um, uh, you you know, do you, you know, do you do you want, because if you think about it, so the principal chooses and and the student body elects. But is that necessarily going to get you, and listen, we've had great, we've had great liaisons. Right? So so but um. You know, d- does does the process that's in place now guarantee that you're going to get? The 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 kinds of liaisons that you want on the board representing the high school. And I and I do think that, yes, we we certainly defer to the high school. But by the same token, as these are folks who will ultimately sit on the days with you, I would argue that the board does have. Some skin in the game as far as that goes. Now, I don't think it necessarily means you have to be. I don't think you should be involved in the process. I think I can be involved in the process as kind of your your designate. But I do think in the way that perhaps you, you 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 kind of shape the policy. You know, and maybe it's more about like students will not be excluded because they're X, Y, and Z, right? Um, you know, wi- would a, you know, is the way the process is designed presently, is it? It's not necessarily going to lend to certain students having an opportunity to serve uh as a student liaison, and they might want to. Right? So so if it was more of a process through which the student said, hey, you know what? I'm going to go for this. Right? That, you know, a student who would never in a million years be be, you know, and not for any fault of the principal identified as a candidate. And a a student who may never be elected by his peers, but would be an outstanding student liaison. Does the process afford that student who's maybe in the in the shadows on some level? That opportunity? That would be the only thing I would say um about, and maybe that's more on the process side than it is in the policy. But I just thought I'd introduce that for the board's consideration.
Sorry, I can add on. This is um what I meant also by, you know, when we. Um, you know, start to uh put like GPA requirements and things like that, because like you said. Um, there's different types of talents, and it's not that we're lowering the standard of a student or expectations of a student. It's just that some students do better academically, but might have like, you know, a knack for other things. Um, you know, like like a representative, like a student body representative. Um, and that's, that was, um, I actually brought that up at the last um policy workshop, it it was. Um, on possibly, um, you know. Changing the standard and also with um with Mrs. Uh, Tony Clevergen, um, you added um to possibly add, you know, a junior in there.
Yeah, and that is in the West Orange policy. My point was just to, you know, make sure that we have the right one. And I think, you know, I feel. You know, that the, it's been working. And I think we've had some outstanding, outstanding students. And I'm kind of like, let's not. Fix what's not broken. I mean, you know, I feel like, you know, the policy is only a few years old and um. I I don't know. I just feel like we've we've really had some great, great students. Um, and I would hate to mess with what's going on. Um, I think it's a good point. I don't personally need to be. Involved in the selection or have met them. I feel like, you know. They've done a great job and the process seems to work. We're getting, you know, very good candidates who are thoughtful, who are engaged. To our, you know, attentive to what's going on, you know?
Jen, to your point, you just, you just hit it on the head. You said the candidates. I've never met any candidates. I've only met those I've been appointed to the board. So I've never met any other candidates, so I wouldn't know if they are the best of the best. Um, and that's not to say that we don't have, I a hundred percent agree with everyone that we've had great student liaisons, um, and it's done a terrific job. Um, but, you know, we haven't met the other candidates, so I don't know on what I don't know. Um, but one of the things that does strike me is in terms of status, it says survey both the pleasure of our students in the high schools and the Board of Ed. And I thought the idea behind the student liaisons was to represent all the schools, not just the high school. And that's feedback that we're getting back from the community is that. While they're great in reporting back on the high school events and things that are going at the high school, we hear little to nothing about the middle schools and our elementary schools. Um, so, you know, I guess I would see it student liaisons to the board as being representative of all of our schools, not just the high school. So I won, I'm wondering if we can maybe change that piece of it. Um.
We're working on that now. I I agree with, you know, everything everybody's saying, but I I think. Um, as far as the policy is concerned, I think it looks good. I think it is working, maybe the process. The background, like Dr. C said, maybe he can help tweak that if it needs to be tweaked. But um, this is still new. We're we're still working through it before we start changing it. And and we haven't found anything wrong with it. The only thing that I see here is it says it's one, one representative and one. What did it say?
Um, alternate?
One alternate, yeah.
Yeah, and I I haven't thought that. I haven't thought that there was one rep and one alternate. I thought they were equal.
Me too, yeah.
So that's something that we can take a look at. I I would think, I I thought they were both student reps. I didn't know one was. An alternate. So that's something that needs to be clarified, but.
And an alternate to me seems like the wrong language, because that would indicate that they would have some sort of voting. But, you know, privileges that they don't have. So at least the word alternate, that's what sort of.
Well, I thought alternate meant if the primary didn't show up, alternate came.
Yeah, right. That's what I would.
Which is so great, because they, you know, each shares something different, and I really like that about it.
So so I I think, I I think Mr. Schaez, the president Schaez summed it up. I I mean, I'm looking at the policy. I think I think the policy is. Um, I think the policy works and and I think for me, you know, I think it's a matter of, you know, why don't I just? You know, and admittedly, I I've never really had. I've never really had a conversation, an in-depth conversation with the high school principal about how the process has worked. I've never had a conversation with him about the extent to which he feels it's working or how we might be able to adjust that or adapt it. Um, you know, so why don't I just, you know, vow to do that and um. And um and really with the the idea of that we're not through the process, that the process. Allows and enables kids. This, this may be their opportunity to shine, right? Whereas they haven't necessarily had one. And does the process, is the process, does the process, you know, afford that opportunity? Are are we picking up on kids who might be able to have this as a great opportunity? Um, and that's, I just think if it's not, then it should, because, you know, it. It could be a good opportunity for a student, wouldn't necessarily be someone that we would see. So I've solved out a circle back with Mr. Moore, but I think the policy, no one gets hurt with the policy. It's pretty, it's pretty straight down the fairway. Um, it protects the board, sets the basic expectations for participation and conduct.
Great. So I I've noted that um that we prefer the current West Orange policy ninety one forty and that there will be um. the administration will recommend uh, changes regarding process and participation. Uh, process of selection and participation. Have, have I misunderstood where we landed, or is that accurate?
I think that's accurate.
Okay. Great, thank you. Five more.
Uh, so the next one up is by law 0164, conduct of board meetings, and this was Terri's.
Okay, so I've got two Strauss S May to one West Orange. And I really liked the West Orange, but there are things from the other two that I'd like to incorporate.
If I could just interrupt you for one second for the folks um, on, in the community. So you're also looking at uh, by law 0167, which is public participation in board meetings?
Yes, I was gonna say that in a second. Yeah. So, 0164 is conduct of board meetings. And um, the thing here that I was questioning, it says announcement of adequate notice. The person presiding shall commence each meeting with an announcement of the notice. We, here in West Orange, that's done by the board secretary, not the, the president. So, that doesn't fit our our way of doing things. And then the order of business, still on that page, shall be as follows. And we go along real fine, right up to report from the board president and/or board members. And then we would go into petitions and hearings of citizens. And then back to next board meeting and executive session. So, that does not, that order does not appear in the West Orange um, document, but I think it should. I, I think that would be fine to incorporate that with that minor change. And then I'm looking at 0167, public participation in board meetings. And what I'd like to do there, um, under number four, public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Uh, one, two, and three are fine. And then number four, all statements, questions are directed to the presiding officer. Um, and maybe we do this, maybe as president, I just don't know that I'm doing this yet, but it says, the president then redirects either to the superintendent or to other board members, or that the president fields all the questions. So I haven't been doing that. I've been, I've been handing them off right to Dr. Kasko. Or he's been taking them, so either way. Um, so I don't know how we feel about that, if we want to leave that statement in. Um, and then number five, we don't have this included in the West Orange. This is what the president is able to do under which conditions, to interrupt if the statement is too lengthy, to interrupt if it's abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Um, request any person to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. Uh, the next one, this one was a heavy, a big one about requiring assistance of law enforcement. Um, and then, of course, call for recess, recess or adjournment. And if necessary, waive all of those rules if, if things are going off track. So, I thought that was important to include um, in ours. So I don't know if that would be two different numbers, or if we could consolidate and make one number and get all of that information in one document. But looking at ours, I, I think ours is well done. Ours includes electronic communication among board members, which is not included in the Strauss S May. And I think that's really important, that we um, define for ourselves and for the public uh, what happens when we're not seated as a working board. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Terri. Um, you know, I, I wanted to get your thoughts. Um, so in our West Orange bylaw, um, we kind of define what, what open to the public means, so A through J. Um, we say, um, all meetings of the Board of Education shall be open to the public with the exception of meetings to discuss, and then we go A through J.
Right.
So, I, is that thought, or would everyone like to see items A through J incorporated into um, defining what the public meeting is, or?
I'm suggesting um, that they are. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that is part of my suggestion.
Okay. Um, and then the other um, question I have.
And I'm sorry, just with regards to those, I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but just to stay on, on, on that topic. Those are the same items that are normally listed at regular board meetings, uh,
Yes.
Uh, for closed session, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I have no objection to adding them into the uh, into the bylaw, but they, but they do normally appear on uh, on our agenda as well.
Right. And Mr. Rothstein, is, is your, you seem to have a pretty good handle on policies sort of thread out into other policies. This, this, this Strauss S May policy seems pretty, as a bylaw, seems pretty high level. Um, are there other Strauss S May policies that get more into the nitty gritty of the operating procedures of the board meeting, or no?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look right now, if you want to continue the conversation without me, and I'll search for that.
Okay. Because I'm wondering if there's a more, if, if there's a more specific.
Another one, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Mrs. Mrs. Um, Terri, uh, would you, so your, your, your suggestion would be to keep the West Orange policy and incorporate Strauss S May into?
Third, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
And what's different, uh, again, and Gary just mentioned that, on ours, it does talk about executive session. The other two don't go into as great a detail. And I know that the board dealt with that a few years ago, and that's why it appears so lengthy on each of the agendas now. So I think it's really important that this be in our policy.
Absolutely. Um, so Terri, just to, to, just for note purposes, um, on the conduct of the board meetings, we're saying, I, I think it's great, I think you're correct, I think we do need to include the order of business. Um, in addition to noting that the board secretary does the announcement of adequate notice. Um, in order of the business, do we all agree that um, after reports, discussions, and recommendations, the petitions and hearings of citizens should come before board reports? The way we have it set up right now? So right now, the second, the second public comment session comes after the reports, discussions, and recommendations, before we do our board report from the president and board members. And that was, I think, more so that the public could have the ability to comment prior to the board speaking. I just want to make sure we have that noted, um, that we want to make that change to this order.
Well, that's not what I said, though.
Well, that's what I'm asking, are we, are we?
Right, so.
Right now, if you look at our, our current agenda, like for tonight, right, so the petitions and hearings of citizens usually comes after our uh, discussions. The reports, discussions, and recommendations. And then we do public comment, the second public comment, and then we do the report from the board president and board members. That's, and that's where we usually kind of do our own little um, updates before we do the exec, uh, next board meeting announcement and adjournment. So are we looking to reverse that? Or do we not want to include it at all? It's not in our West Orange, our current West Orange policy, so if we don't have it, then I think that leaves it, and, and Dr. C, I'm not sure if you know this, if we don't include it and we strike it from the Strauss S May, because we're keeping our West Orange policy, what happens? Nothing?
Cheryl, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so the order of the, of order of business, right, we go questions, so the superintendent and board reports, right? Then we go to public, uh, uh, comment on agenda items only. Then we go to our agenda items, right, so reports, discussions, recommendations, where we go through uh, the full agenda. And then typically, at that point, we open it up to the public for comment, the second public comment on any agenda, on any topic. And then after that's finished, we do our board, we go around. So that's what I, so the way this is set up, we would do those reports before doing the petition, the public comment, the second public comment.
Right, so yes, I agree with you.
So change it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure, because if we're gonna.
Everybody was quiet.
Is there, if I'm not mistaken, I feel like there's something somewhere either on the website or that has been presented before, um, as to how a board meeting um, occurs, like order of business, right? And then it can change depending on if it's a policy workshop, or, you know, like that kind of thing. I think, I feel like there's something somewhere. Um, I think I might have even gotten on my board, you know, my, my board member intro.
Training.
Right, right, my, my.
Training, remember that.
Right, right, so I saw it somewhere, that's all.
Yeah.
And I thought that was very helpful, and I feel like if we're gonna, right.
This is typical, yeah.
So I feel like it should be included.
The question about, I'm sorry, Cheryl. Oh, so, so the question about whether items A through J, uh, as noted in West Orange policy 9322 for conducting closed sessions, um, that is a part of Strauss S May bylaw 0166, executive sessions. Um, now, it doesn't, it seems like one of them is either missing, or maybe folded up, two are folded up into one uh, in the bylaws, so I'm gonna have to do a closer read to find that, because there are ten items in A through J, but there are nine items listed out in policy 0166. Um, and there are a number, uh, Dr. Kasko, there are a number of um, of bylaws that have to do with the operation of the meeting itself. So, it, it could be, in fact, that uh, that uh, a, a deeper dive into the West Orange policy 9322 will find uh, some more of that information covered in other bylaws.
We did actually approve the Strauss S May bylaw 0166 on September of 2020.
Executive session?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, the executive session, Strauss S May policy. So it would appear we've already captured those. Um, which is good to know, good to know that's there.
I also had a question, I know there's been a lot that we've kicked around here, but um, on 0164 uh, in the first section parliamentary authority. This is just my ignorance here, but i- it begins that Rob, Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern the, the meetings. Do we in fact do that?
Tanya, yes, I think we do.
And I think Mrs. Terri, you had a question about um, number four, right? So if part, if Robert's uh, Rules of Order, you know, if that's indeed what we are following, then would that answer the question about public participation shall be governed by the following rules, number four, one, two, three, and then four, where it says all statements, questions, and inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer, and then a- any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member. Shall be, I think, I feel like that's, goes along with Robert's rule.
That's what the president is supposed to do. Is that what you're saying?
Right, right, yes.
So delicately stated, though.
Yes.
Do we do that right now? Do we follow that?
No.
I feel like you haven't been doing it, but I think that, you know, it is.
Oh, we are, do I, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, is what we're doing currently works, but.
Well, I feel like sometimes we ask Dr. Kasko first, or, yeah, well, Mrs. Terri, you ask, you know, before, if anybody.
The community member asked the question, and then Dr. Kasko would respond.
Right.
So that would mean I would say, Dr. Kasko?
Right, or if you wanted to take it first.
Right, or give it to you, Ms. Werto.
The other, the other um, kind of thing that had come up, um, just, you know, in my own observations of, of our meetings, um, and, and specific to, you know, it being a public meeting. Um, and this is not in any way, shape, or form to say that I don't want to hear from the community, but I'm wondering if how we define, if we do define community. Um, what I've heard from feedback from other districts is that they do not allow anyone who does not live within their, that school district, so meaning the township of West Orange, to make public comment. Um, and so I would not want to limit anyone who, let's say it's a faculty member, or um, someone who, who has uh, you know, a faculty member, or staff member, or, or um, some, you know, some sort of staff personnel that doesn't live in West Orange, I certainly would want them to feel that they could comment at board meetings. But in, in, I'm wondering if there's a more efficient way to allow for taxpayers and the stakeholders in the actual West Orange township. Um, how we can, and, you know, um, work towards engaging those uh, folks first, or some sort of order, you know, I'm not really sure um, how to go about that, but a lot of feedback that I'm hearing, and, and I'm sure many of my peers have heard, is that folks are waiting, you know, especially on some of these topics, you know, they're waiting until 11 o'clock at night, and they're a little upset that folks who don't live in the town are going to speak first. Um, and other schools, they do not allow anyone who does not live in the district, we're one of the very few that allows anyone to comment or in public comment. So I just wanted to get some thoughts on, you know, because that would be a policy-related item, I think, especially with public sessions or public participation. And that's what kind of just got me thinking, um, how we can make our public comment portion a little bit more efficient. Um, definitely don't want to cut down the amount of time, obviously, you know, three minutes is actually not a lot of time to get someone's thoughts and questions. Um, but more on the, how do we make it more efficient, so our stakeholders and our actual West Orange community members feel that they're being heard, and that we're not less hearing their questions at 11 o'clock at night, when we're all, you know, starting to fade and get tired. Um, just a thought, and, and just curious how others felt about that.
Um, I'm just looking at what's here in Strauss S May, um, which is different than what we do, and Cheryl, this doesn't necessarily address your comment, but it says the person is prefacing their comments by an announcement of his or her name. I'm on 0167.
Right, yeah, that's exactly what made me start thinking about it.
So, it, it here does not imply that you have to live in West Orange. Um, it doesn't even ask for your address, it asks for your municipality of residence, your group affiliation, which would be if we had teachers who were speaking.
Right.
Representing the association. Um, so I don't, I don't have a problem, because that would exclude our staff, correct?
Right, and, and I'm not looking to exclude our staff, I'm, I'm looking to see, do we have a way to make it more efficient? Um, and, and I don't know, you know, is there room for two different, I know we already have two public comments, but is there one for our community versus non-community members? Um, so parents, you know, had uh, or community mi- members, our seniors, our, our taxpayers had the opportunity to speak um, earlier in, in the meeting. Um, I'm not really sure, I, that, like I said, this is just my throwing this out, because I did see that, I also saw in our West Orange policy um, on page one, about public employees making statements pursuant to their official duties, and that's kind of where I was looking at, how does that, we don't, I don't, I did not see that in the Strauss S May.
Yeah, so I think one of the things I would just like to say is as far as I've, as long as I've been on the board, which is not long, probably like four meetings, I think the earliest I got home was like 11. And um, you know, I feel like, I don't know if that's normal. Um, from what I'm hearing, it's not, so, um, I mean, but either way, I think that as elected officials, we have to like be here, and so I don't know if we should, I feel like if we set up a second, or like. And so I don't know if we should, I feel like if we set up a second or like prioritize certain stakeholders versus other stakeholders. It gives like, um, I don't know, I, I just feel like we're all stakeholders and I, I, I know the frustration as well. Um, you know, one of the things I also saw was um, we wait all the way to the end for public comment on open and any. Whereas maybe they would prefer if they can say whatever they want to say before the meeting starts at the beginning and then agenda items at the end. But then I feel like there's no, not, not that like incentive, but like we want our community to participate and be involved in our meetings. And so I don't know if changing that order would make it easier.
I think my, my, my thought is this, um, our stakeholders are our students, right, number one. Um, our parents and taxpayers, they're the ones paying our faculties um salaries for the most part, let's, I mean, if we're gonna be completely transparent and honest. And so I think parents feel they have a right to speak earlier than twelve at midnight, you know, where they, you know, they have kids and that's not anything, it's our faculty. But the faculty does have a union and the union has been very, very loud um about their feelings, they, they have no, you know. We, we know, we're aware of emails and, and coming to the podium to speak. So I'm wondering if there's some, maybe some sort of discussion we could have with the union reps to kind of maybe have. Um, one indicative, you know, one statement or maybe a, a portion where the union reps um speak for their, you know, for their, their. Uh constituents, um. Just a, and, and more so not because we don't want to hear from everyone, but more so just in efficiency purposes, I'm, I'm all about efficiency. Um, and keeping things short and sweet, so if we can hear from um the union rep, you know, or the president of the union. Come to speak for their constituents, constituents, um, I wonder if that's a more efficient way or maybe that's um something we can add to the board. As, as a report out, I'm not sure, like I said, this is just me thinking out loud, I'll try to come up with a constructive way. So that everyone's voices are heard, but in a more efficient um and timely manner. Because while you're right, Melinda, we do elect, get elected to do this job, we also all have jobs outside of this in our own families. And it really honestly isn't fair to get home at one, two AM in the morning because of a board bed meeting, because we've had, um, we have had that happen.
And that's unusual.
Do it, but, you know, um. About, just something that I want to throw out there, just to kind of, you know, brainstorm about, not, uh, certainly, certainly believe that our faculty. Um, and staff should have a voice in, in decisions and, and what goes on within our school district. Um, but just kind of trying to come up with some more efficient ways to hear everyone's voices.
That's, I, I mean, I think that's an interesting proposal, has anyone else heard of allowing? Like, you know. For example, the union representative to have a report at the meet, does that ever, has that ever occurred? Looking to sort of Ms. Trick Scales and Dr. Kaskon.
Yeah, I, I've been on, I've been in situations where at every board meeting. The president of the PTA Council and the president of the Teachers Association were on the agenda. You know, so different districts do it, do it different ways. I, I just want to throw this in, on this oh one six seven. It says that the board can determine the length of the portion to be, to be determined. Um, if we were to say that we were gonna take public comment on uh off agenda items. But only put, say, an hour before and then we could do an hour after, um. That might be a possibility. I don't know, Dr. Kaskon, what do you think?
Yeah, well, listen, I mean, I, I think it's um. Certainly, you know, um. You know, technically, your only employee is, is the superintendent. You know, by the same token, as a board, certainly the, the voices and the, the input and the perspective of, of the larger, you know. Um, group of employees in the district, you know, obviously that's important to you. So the question becomes. Are, are employees um. Knowing that. They have a. A- a- as a group. As an association, have a means by which and through which to um. Ensure that the board is aware of where they're coming from, right? Now, within the existing operations of the school district and within the chain of command, they most certainly do. Um, and that's me, right? Um, and so, you know, um. It's my responsibility um to be, uh, to avail myself to, to employees, to, you know, to the association leadership. To understand their perspective and to present that to the board. So the question becomes, you know, what is therefore the purpose of? Of, you know, many association members um coming to a meeting and speaking and do you as the board feel that there is a? Value um to that? And is it something that you as a board, a practice that you as a board feel should continue? Um, that's really the fundamental question. Um, and not so much just kind of like the founding, you know, the, the, the constitution, right? Not just now with me and this board. But moving forward in time with maybe a different superintendent and a different board, is that a um, uh. You know, something, uh, something that you want to leave in place to afford the employees? And if that is the case, then can there be some form of, you know, kind of a, uh, an agreement? Or collaboration between myself and the association um to, you know, kind of work towards having, you know, kind of monthly statements? Or monthly reports um to, to make that kind of more of an efficient process, you, by which the association presents their feedback to the board directly.
Wondering if uh, if the New Jersey School Boards Association has um any recommendations? And uh, in, in this matter, they may have um, you know, organized a description of different ways. That this exact situation is handled a, amongst different school boards that would be useful to us to review.
I also, I actually like the idea also that uh Mrs. Terry brought up about, you know, having a union report, um. Not necessarily saying that we would do away with non-residents being able to call in or faculty trying to call in, but uh. I think that would be helpful as well to have in addition uh the union reports, not that I want to make our means longer, but. Think that's helpful to have like a unified voice with teachers. And that we can hear them out as well and, and, and address the concerns or just to hear out the concern.
I do agree, I like that idea of, um, you know, and I would add the president of the council of PTA. So that you have a voice from your parents as well, um. You know, I don't want to shut anybody down because I think when you define community, it's, yes, it's our, our parents, our taxpayers. But, you know, we have eleven hundred teacher, right, eleven hundred teachers that are, you know, uh, and staff. That work and serve our children every day. You know, I, I think giving and my feeling is this has happened because, you know, we get this because they're not feeling heard, so. You know, putting something in where you have a forum, you know, and you can be heard. And I think this was, you know, something that's, um, you know, from a long, long time ago. Um, so I think, I do like that idea and I think if we can, you know, put that into a policy, then it's really, it's solidifying our commitment to that. Teacher and, and staff community, that you're important enough that we want to hear your voice. Um, and we want to hear what you as a collective body have to say, um. So.
I also think that um, right now, it's just unprecedented times in general, so I don't think that normally we get a lot of calls. You know, from our faculty or, you know, our, our, yeah. Okay, okay, well, you know, you guys have been here longer than me, so.
No, but I think, you know, I think everyone's, I think, I think we're all really on the same page of we want to hear from everyone. It's just a matter of how do we efficiently and effectively do that, so the message is getting heard and not lost in translation because we're, you know, of, of how it's being presented. So, um, and like I said, we're one of the very few townships and school districts that allows. Um. You know, uh, faculty and, and or to, to phrase, Dr. C, um, employees to speak. Um, my husband's district, they are not permitted to join board of ed meetings at all. Um, so, you know, and, and I guess that's why I, I was wondering, I was like, what's our policy? So I think to Gary's point, if we can go back to school boards and find out, you know, what, what's an efficient and effective way to get to hear everyone's voices. Um, that's just, you know, something to, to think about and stick around.
Before we leave this, um, since I found this line in here that I forgot to mention. About determining how long we want the public comment to be now, um. I was told, I forget who told me that, but when we announced that we're having a meeting on February third. That's the meeting for February third. After twelve midnight, we have now gone into another day. And so. Do we want to put a length of time if we're saying it's two hours of public comment? Or if we say at midnight. The meeting is over because we've announced that we're having a meeting on the next day. Um, is that something that we want to talk about? This would be the time to. To discuss that, I mean, we, we've not been running until two in the morning, that was an anomaly. But as Cheryl said, the budget season is coming. The fact that people are tuning in with us virtually is giving us a much greater um audience. Um, and so as long as we stay virtual, we can anticipate that, that we'll have large numbers of people on who want to say things. So um, just something to think about.
I don't know if I would want to, I mean, I'm new, so I don't know. Don't, don't bite my head off if I say I like being out until two in the morning, but with all of you guys. But, um. Yeah, I think that, um, I, I, I kind of like the fact that we've had so much participation. This is, you know, I think a great time to encourage that and keep it up and. I don't know, not saying that I don't, I want to stay up till two and three in the morning, I do anyway, but regardless.
I'm sorry, I, I, but I, I think something that you said made me think of this too, that, that uh, we may be. Looking to regulate based on the uh, the abnormality of the times we're in right now. Um, I think it would be an extremely unusual circumstance for a live meeting, uh like an in-person. I'm imagining our post-COVID days um to run so long because people are just less likely to want to stay. And I don't blame them, who would, you know, stay in the, in the auditorium at the high school for still many hours. Um, uh, you know, waiting to speak. So i- i- it may also be the case that um, we should be careful about what we put into policy right now. Um, to, to tie our hands in the hands of, of anyone else, considering that it might become a non-issue. Uh, in the months ahead anyway. I, I, I think all of the points are valid points, there's a, there's, there's one side to the value of everybody can speak. And we're, we're here, we're an elected board, we're gonna listen to everybody's voice as long as it takes. The flip side of that is. You know, i- it's hard to hear people uh at some point, the later that it gets. And um, uh, not just us, but for anybody to hear anybody else's point. Um, and so. There, there should be some sort of, uh, some sort of an accommodation to make the meetings work better. Um, I guess I'm just responding, I don't have an answer to this, I, I don't know where I fall on this right now, but I'm a little bit hesitant about making rules. Based on our virtual COVID scenario reality, which hopefully isn't going to live for too much longer into the future. Um, but as far as NJ SBA feedback goes, um, President Trig Scales, if you'd like, I'd be happy to reach out and, and ask that question. Or if you want to make contact and see if they have any uh, any guidance they can offer. You, you know, if you'd like me to make that contact, I'm, I'm offering to reach out.
Volunteering, Mr. Rothstein.
Okay.
So do we feel like we're in a good place with the um policy and I think we have some feedback about the order of items? Um, for both bylaws and utilizing the West Orange policy. So with that, I'll move on to the next one, which is fifty-one eleven eligibility of resident and non-resident students and regulate. And the regulation, policy and regulation, um, this was Ms. Werth. So let you start off.
Let's me hold on, I need to get my stuff together. Um, I think that uh, last time we brought this up. Um, we said that there were certain things that were no longer legal. Um, and that Dr. Kaskon, you were supposed to look into that, um, the legality of like the West Orange policy, I believe. Um. Because I felt that the, some of the West Orange policy was contradicting to the regulation. Um, and, um.
Yeah, we, it was, sorry, Ms. Werth, the, the only as, the only piece of the West Orange policy. I'm sorry, interrupt, which was um, which was previously in, which was at a date with the statute. Was uh immigration status. But I, I actually think that the, that the um Strauss estimate policy is pretty strong. And is definitely well-aligned with current statute code. Um, I guess the only question would be, and we can, we can certainly certify that the Strauss estimate policy is, is aligned with all legal documents. I guess the question becomes, was there anything in the West Orange policy? Um, that the board felt was not in the Strauss estimate policy that was worthwhile to be added.
Um, the only thing I saw was, um. There was a citation in the West Orange policy, NJAC six A two eight dash two point three. That just says warrants the board, warrants boards of education to construe eligibility to attend district schools liberally to ensure student rights. To a free public education. That was my only, um, I, I do think that the process may covers everything. Um, and it's a pretty strong uh policy and I, I think that would be my only um. Suggestion to add that the West Orange policy has.
Where, where is that, Mrs. Werth?
This is in West Orange Policy uh five one one eight. The second page on the bottom where it says other reasons, other non-resident pupils, other reasons. Um, all the way at the bottom. NJAC six A. Colon two eight dash two point three, warns boards of education to construe eligibility to attend just. To attend district schools liberally to ensure students' rights to a free public education. And I think that was everything. Uh, I didn't really see anything that needed to be noted.
My only concern about, about that, that reference to administrative code is that this policy was last. Was adopted on. Two thousand thirteen, so and they, I know that they update that codebook on an annual basis, so I'm sure that the code that's referenced is even necessarily still current.
Okay. Didn't see it cited in um.
So I did have a question um just in regards to the description of non-residents in our West Orange policy. Um, I don't think it was all incorporated into the Strauss estimate on, oh, there are no pages, but the second to last page. Um, where it says non-resident students, so, um, but I'll get to that in a second. Before I get into that, did anyone else see anything about homeless pupils? Um, I noticed it was, it was uh pulled out in the West Orange policy, I did not see it in the Strauss estimate. So I was wondering if we need to include that. Into the Strauss S may policy. So on page two of our West Orange policy of homeless pupils.
Uh, that is also, I did note that, it's in my notes, not on my paper notes, it's in my computer notes, but um. Yeah, so uh, yes, to include homeless students where Strauss S may has a separate regulation policy, that's what it was. I still haven't noted here, Strauss S may has a separate regulation or policy and it's five one one four. Domestic violence and five one one six homeless.
Yeah, I would imagine that homeless is. Yeah, I would imagine that homeless is, homeless is covered under a separate policy.
Right. It's uh, five one one six for homeless. So it has a separate policy that covers specific homelessness. Homeless students, I'm sorry.
Which we did not adopt yet.
It's also on page um, five and five one one one.
Um, where is it? Page five or five one one one? I don't.
The first paragraph.
Oh, right, right, right. I see it now. It, it covers it like, it touches on it very briefly, but then because it also has a separate policy for it.
And I think we need to pull it, like what we have in the West Orange policy should be in the five eleven, the fifty-one eleven Strauss estimate policy. Although we didn't go over, we haven't reviewed the the fifty-one sixteen education of homeless policy yet.
Right, so it's not adopted. What is it? What column is it on? I don't think I double checked it.
I don't know what column it falls under, it's just that I have it as not adopted yet on my little. And then the only other.
What about the five one one four? Is that for domestic violence?
Five one one.
Because the, I best, you know, I, I noted that um, okay.
They're both in column two, most wording cannot change.
And we haven't adopted either of those yet.
It, it says wording cannot change, right? So it's in the, but we haven't adopted it. I think that um, when I reviewed it, I don't have it here in my notes for some reason. But when I pulled it up, I felt that it covered, since it covered it in a separate policy. I don't know, I felt that the, as Dr. Tesco said, the Strauss estimate policy is pretty solid.
It is a mandated policy. It, it's a mandated, so we really shouldn't be doing much with it at all.
I just thought that under the non-resident, um, on page eleven of the Strauss estimate, that we should incorporate the first paragraph of our West Orange policy where for non-residents. And then on the last page of the Strauss estimate, uh, page eight, under other non-resident students, um, our West Orange policy goes a little bit further into about tuition payment and availability of space, um, which I think we don't, not mentioned in Strauss estimate. So while, you know, obviously we want to welcome students who are paying tuition, we also have to be mindful of the availability of space. Um, and it also goes into the chief administrator shall develop procedures for enrollment. So I just thought that some of the, the language under other non-resident, the first two paragraphs should be included in the Strauss estimate.
So the second paragraph is included because it's a military, quote, it cites military um, like National Guard or parent of a military, active military or, does it say anything? Yeah, active military child. So I think it's somewhere in here, the Strauss estimate, if I'm not mistaken. Right, so it's in the, it's in the first, uh, the fourth paragraph on five one one one. Um, child who is domiciled within the school district and resides with a parent or guardian who is a member of the National Guard or member of the reserve component of the armed forces of the United States.
I guess I just like how we called it out um, separately in the Western policy, so that there's no having to search through paragraphs. I mean, the Strauss estimate is very thorough and, and very in-depth, but it's very wordy and a lot of references to NJSA and has, you know, eighteen A, eighteen A here, and a NJAC. So if you're not someone who wants to go and look up these policies, um, the provisions of NJSA C, NJSSA, eighteen A, thirty-one. I'm not one, if, if I'm gonna do something, I want to be quick hit, like I want to be able to read it and see it. I don't want to have to go searching for another document, which I think is the whole point of the Strauss estimate was, was that this was gonna be a one-hit wonder for folks to be able to find things easily. So if I have to go find another policy or another provision, that's not really helpful to me. Um, so I guess that's why I'm saying that.
Clarify what that citation, right, what's, what is the, the, so Dr. Tesco, I know we mentioned, you mentioned it to me before in my briefing, what NJ, and we were actually speaking about this, it's scary.
So is, right, so if you look at so if the response was, so let's look at, for example, on just the page just of the Strauss estimate policy, page six. So um, you know, where it start, actually starts, starts in the page before that, no student shall be removed from school unless the parent, guardian, adult student or resident, uh, keeping an affidavit student has been informed of his or her entitlement as a hearing before the Board of Education. So, right, so, so the definition of affidavit student, you know, if, if, if someone was reviewing this policy, they wanted to understand what affidavit student meant, they would have to go to NJAC six eight twenty-two dash one point two to look for that definition. There, there are so many code and just, so NJAC six A, education administrative code, and there's eighteen A, which is statute. So if we're talking about, you know, every time there's a citation to code or statute, including the actual verbiage from the code or the statute, you know, you know, we're talking about, you know, a significant undertaking by the board. So, you know, that's, of course, the board's prerogative, should the board wish to do that. But um, I would also say that a lot of the work that the board's already done, we'd have to go back over that because we have not been necessarily approaching the work in that way where we've, we've added the language from the statute to code every time that reference was made.
And I might add, in the regulation, it has the definitions. Because this is huge for every school district, making sure that the taxpayers are paying for the kids who live in town. So Strauss estimate has gone through a great deal of, of putting this together, the regulation, which is huge, along with the policy. So if folks don't understand the policy, the regulation is right there. And it does tell you what an affidavit student is, an appeal, an applicant. It, it does spell it out for you, so you really would not have to go and reference um, code.
Do they have links to the code that if you wanted to go see, read more about it and to the?
Online, right? It's highlighted.
Yeah, like once you get the whole book and it's online, they do link to it, right?
Right, you can highlight it if you want to go read it.
Like, is it hyperlinked, Ms. Stone?
That's what I meant. Is it hyperlinked to, from the policy to the code where you can read the code?
I'm looking into it.
I think that would definitely be, um, you know, if it's hyperlinked, then I, I like it even more.
Yeah, I, I wasn't necessarily asking to, to, to find each of those within the policy. I was just saying that where we called out specific items, so like under non-residents, um, homeless pupils. Um, I would like to continue that in the Strauss estimate where it's called out. Um, so like I said, if we can incorporate the items that are under non-residents on page one of the West Orange policy into the paragraph of non-resident students on page seven of Strauss estimate, I think that would be helpful. And um, the first paragraph of other non-resident pupils to be incorporated into page eight of other non-resident students of Strauss estimate, I think that would be um, helpful.
Just an FYI, looking at one, one implementation of this, the Montclair Board of Education policies, the uh, the statutes or, or um, uh, like the MJAC, for example, those codes are not hyperlinked. So you would, although it, it's simple enough to just copy and paste it into Google and, and find the information. It, it's not complicated to find those.
Is there an option to hyperlink it? I haven't hyperlinked, I wonder.
It's uh,
That's kind of like not to do with, not, 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 nothing to do with like this current policy, but just in general, I think that would be really helpful if that was an option that we had as well, because I'm sure that this is not the first policy that has these citations in it.
I thought they were, really.
Yeah, it's worth asking uh, if that's an option.
Any other feedback on this one? On five eleven?
Well, I think, I guess, um, maybe we should, um, I guess another suggestion would be to keep it together, because I understand like the confusion and the going back and forth, Cheryl, that you brought up, where on page seven, it says non-resident students, and then page eight, it says other non-resident students, so it's, I guess, having it in one spot. And maybe merging the, the verbiage.
I'm sorry, I, I want to know what we're recommending as uh, as changes for this one, and I'm not clear.
Um, so my recommendation, Gary, was that on page seven of the Strauss estimate policy, that we incorporate the first paragraph of our West Orange policy on page one, just that first paragraph under non-residents into the Strauss estimate, non-residents paragraph.
And I guess the second one too, right? You, you, I guess you were right.
Similarly, on page eight, under other non-resident students of Strauss estimate, incorporating the first paragraph under other non-resident pupils um, into other non-resident students of Strauss estimate. Um, and that's more so because it goes a little bit into Scott's role in procedures. Um, and it does highlight, um, where I've seen a lot of references to tuition. I didn't see any references really in Strauss estimate to availability of space. And I think we can all agree in West Orange space is a hot commodity, so um, definitely want to be mindful of that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's important, you know, um, to, that, that's, that's reflected in policy as a consideration in the decision to grant that request. I mean, it is something certainly that's looked at internally, administratively, clearly. But to have it reflected in policy makes sense, I would argue.
Anything else before I move on to the next one? All right, uh, so the next policy is fifty-two forty tardiness, and that was Jennifer.
So I don't really think, I thought the, the two um, you know, or the section of our larger West Orange policy that incorporates, you know, attendance, absences and excuses. I mean, I thought the tardiness P um, was fairly well-aligned, so I didn't really have any recommendations to make any changes to that. And that my recommendation would be to accept it.
Um, Jennifer, to your point, this, the, the West Orange policy is pretty, it incorporates a lot. So Gary, um, if you have Strauss estimate open, I'm assuming we have, that Strauss estimate has policies for excuse and unexcused absences, medically excused absences. Attendance and instruction. So all, it's, I, I think this is similar. Um, it's one of those things where we have a lot of items in one policy where Strauss estimate breaks them out.
Yeah, there's a, a Strauss estimate policy fifty-two hundred on attendance, which covers off on an uh, a number of the items regarding, well, at least it mentions uh, the excused and unexcused absences, let's see.
Can you repeat the?
Uh, fifty-two hundred is attendance.
Yep.
And we're looking right now at fifty-two forty on tardiness. There's a excusal from class or program. There's a number of different policies that cover off on.
Are any of them adopted already, or are they all waiting?
Um, our policy on attendance fifty-two hundred and the regulation were adopted in June of twenty twenty.
What is the regulation? I just want to cite it here for my own notes.
I just had fifty-two hundred for attendance, it's a mandated one, so it was one of the first ones that we, we adopted.
Okay.
Any other?
Oh, is, is fifty-two forty one, the only one that has to do with like attendance that hasn't been adopted?
Well, there's also a forty-two twelve on attendance.
Yeah, and I would, I would venture to say that neither of those have been approved because they're still kind of going through review, administrative input. So I would say that those probably fall into that category of free radicals that have yet to be adopted.
Yeah, so forty-two twelve is uh, not yet adopted.
Yeah. So it may make sense to, to actually you know, bundle all these together.
But excuse me, that's, that's support staff.
Yes.
Okay, so that's not student attendance?
Yeah, I think, um, I think we pulled out, um, and, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we pulled out all the attendance policies, whether uh, it was staff or support staff and students, and we were looking, we were having um, the respective principals and staff take a look at them, and I think that's where, uh, Dr. See where you're at right now with those, right?
Correct.
And you're right, Terry, sorry about that.
Okay. So I just want to be clear that we're, um, adopt the stress estimate as is.
I, I, I thought it might make sense to pull it and just kind of include it in a review. You know, kind of with those other attendance policies and side by side with this West Orange policy to see how Strauss estimate divides up the different topics. And then if there's specific language within this kind of more holistic West Orange policy that we may want to tease out and then drop into those respective more specific policies of Strauss estimate. So I would suggest tabling.
Five two four zero.
Yeah.
Um, I did, actually, I did want to make one more comment about this, because I did like the way the Strauss estimate, when it talked about kind of patterns of tardiness and consequences, that it, um, it was less punitive than the West Orange one. And there is a board policy that, that governs the conduct and discipline, it's uh, fifty-one thirty-one that talks about the consequences for, it, it's part of the student code of conduct, so um, apparently there's disciplinary action outlined in that policy that we should probably review at the same time. And again, that number's fifty-one thirty-one.
Any other? Okay.
Sorry, I just, Jen, can you re, not, repeat the whole thing, but just you said, what, suggest one is less punitive, which one is less punitive, Strauss estimate or West Orange?
Is less punitive, because their last sentence talks about a student who develops a pattern of tardiness. Excused or unexcused will be offered counseling with an appropriate staff member to determine the cause of counseling. You know, certainly more in line with a restorative justice approach where the West Orange policy says a student who is tardy to any class will be subject to disciplinary action as outlined in board policy fifty-one thirty-one, conduct and discipline and the student code of conduct, consequences for accumulated occurrences of tardiness may include detention, loss of credit and an unexcused school day absence.
Any other feedback, or should we move on to the next, the last one?
I think we're ready to move on.
The, the last one's easy.
So seventy-two fifty, school and facility needs, and that was also with Jennifer. And there is no West.
All right, and I did have some thoughts on this one.
What column was this? I'm sorry. I don't have it noted here.
Yeah, my, my thought on this one, folks, was um, I think that this, this is one of those policies that, you know, this, this is one of those policies that, you know, that once it's adopted, I think you have a, a real rough boilerplate here, which gives you something. And so I think you, you have nothing presently, which I think is a problem because there's, there's no protection under policy in the event a request comes your way or something of that nature. I think if you were to consider making some, you know, s- some, some minor edits that could be kind of quickly agreed upon. My, my recommendation is that you get this approved and adopted ASAP and then circle back to it and maybe give more attention to it. Because I think every day you don't have this is a liability for the board. So I think, I think Mrs. Tonaclyff has raised some excellent questions. Naming rights to specific donation levels, uh, criteria for donations of space, duration for naming rights, right? What other criteria? All excellent questions and probably worthy of a policy work session in of itself. But in the meantime, do you want to just get a school and facilities names policy on the book? So you have some measure of process and protection.
Yeah, my only addition would be to, um, add, a little bit more in the second paragraph where it talks about, um, who the facility could be named to memorialize. And it's not necessarily a memorial.
Right.
But, so I kind of object to that word, but my other things would be to add that it's, you know, it's the service of a school district employee or officer, individual, corporation, or other legal entity. So you might want to just have that bucket of information because it could be named after, you know, or alumni. Um, I mean, that would be covered under individual, but I think.
Right, right, right. That's, I mean, it's very, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's very restrictive the way it is now. It's just, right, right.
So just, I would recommend adding those things. And then, yes, I would love to do a deeper dive on this, um, at some other time, but I agree with you that time is of the essence. And when we have nothing, it's better to have something, though.
Is that, if you would, individual?
Um, corporation or other legal entity. So that kind of covers any, you know, in, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a district employee, but.
And I like that the word is May.
Yeah.
A school building, May.
Yeah.
So let me just take a step back. So we're saying that a school facility or building could be named after a corporation? That's what we're allowed, we're saying we want to allow?
Well, if you had a large pharmaceutical company that, you know, gave us a grant for science labs at the high school or at, you know, one of the middle schools that maybe it came, you know, maybe it would come with a naming right to have a little plaque placed next to the door saying, you know,
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I wouldn't want to name a school after a corporation, but.
Yeah, it's more like for, because it does talk about building or facility. So that would fall under the facility and.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
And then maybe to say, instead of just memorialized, to say memorialized or honor the outstanding service. So, because that memorialized would, would be someone who is deceased. And we've already got buildings named for people who are living currently. So, and for, you know, some are deceased, but some are living. So.
And I see that the last paragraph, and what I was thinking was, is, you know, do you want to just, um, you know, say, okay, even not even get that specific and just say service of a school district employee or a school district employee officer, um, or, you know, other individual or legal entity. And then in the last paragraph, it sort of gives you the process there, which is the board welcomes the suggestions of members of the community um, and may appoint a committee of interested persons to conduct appropriate studies and make recommendations for boards consideration. Maybe just by making that second line, just slightly more leaving kind of a, a general end to the sentence. Employee officer, um, or, you know, other, uh, individual or legal entity as deemed appropriate, or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, we can fit, you know, we, I think Liz is, we have some of the words, you know, we'll, we'll fiddle around a little bit with the language and, um, you know, and forward a draft to the board. And, um, by the way, board members, I know, I, I know, uh, a number of you are, are, have been taking notes contemporaneously with the session. So, and I know Liz has as well. So anyone that has notes, um, if you want to forward those to Liz and then she can, she can kind of cross-reference all the note sets and make sure that, um, you know, we, we're covering all our bases there.
Will do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. So.
That was the last one.
Is that it?
That is the last policy for review for tonight. Yes.
Well, yay, yay to Gary and Cheryl and all of us who have contributed and Dr. Kascone and Ms. Hughes. So goody, goody, goody. We got through another policy workshop and accomplished our task. And now we're moving on to petitions and hearings of citizens on any topic. And thank you for hanging in with us.
Okay, yes. So now, uh, we have anyone who would like to speak on anything, doesn't have to be agenda items. Uh, you'll have three minutes and it's the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And at this time, Sharon Ortiz, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sharon Ortiz, Six Low Avenue. Good evening, board members and Dr. Kascone. I'm a taxpayer, community member, teacher at the high school, and yes, a union member. Where do I fit in? We speak as individuals, educators, and human beings, not as union reps. Two hundred and twenty-seven community members and taxpayers live and work for the West Orange School District. Are our voices not welcome? How can you efficiently and effectively determine who has a right to speak when you may be unaware of who lives in West Orange? Or does being an employee in the district negate your rights as a taxpaying community member? Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
As you were listening, we were trying to figure out how to get the voices of everyone. So we're not suggesting that we're not going to allow folks to speak. We're just looking at these policies and trying to figure out how we can have everyone, um, have an opportunity that doesn't run until two in the morning. So we were sharing ideas, um, but certainly we want to hear from, from everyone. Um, anyone else want to respond to that or Dr. Kascone?
Right. Ye- yes. Well, I, I would say that, um, as, um, Ms. Ms. Ortiz is, is right. Staff members who also reside in town, um, I, I would agree, have, have a, a very unique perspective to lend. And, um, certainly as, as residents, even if the board were to put in place a provision and policy, which I was not hearing that they were planning on doing so, but if they were putting, uh, planning on putting a provision that, um, allowed only residents of West Orange to speak during public comment, as a teacher who resided in West Orange, um, that would, you know, you would be entitled to speak under that provision. But I agree. I think, I think, and I commend, you know, and I think a community wherein you have, uh, large numbers of, of, of residents and who, who also work in the schools, I think is a, it, me personally, I believe is a testament to the, a positive testament to the community. Um, it, it kind of hearkens back to, you know, uh, you know, past generations where people, um, you know, lived and worked in the communities, lived and worked in the same community. So, um, that perspective is unique and you would always be entitled to speak as a resident of West Orange and as a taxpayer.
Am I moving on? I'm not sure. Are, are we, is this, I just want to note, like continuing forward, are, is this how we're going to do works and start after each? Or is it going to go back to, because I just want to make sure I.
We're, 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 we're keeping on your toes, Ms. Craft. I would, I would defer to, to President Trick Scales on that.
Yes, I, I think it's more efficient if we try to give an answer right after because we certainly would not want to, um, miss a question. And sometimes we do tend to do that. We're copiously taking notes down, but invariably we sometimes leave out a question. So we're trying this out. Let's see how it works.
Okay, great. Then just, could you then, when it's all settled and ready to go to the next person, just give me that cue?
I certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sandra Mordecai, excuse me, pardon. Uh, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sandra Mordecai, five sixteen five, Abbey Way, West Orange. Uh, thank you for all the policy work. Um, a couple of things, I mentioned it at the last meeting. The list of first reading policies is not on the website. I'm looking at the website right now. The full graph link is there, but not the link to the first reading. Also, on second readings generally is when you get comments from the public, but si- si- not having heard the discussion, it's hard to give a comment on second reading. But I do have a couple of comments on your first readings that I was trying to take a lot of notes. I hope I don't run out of time, but I'll email you all. So thank you, Mrs. Trick Scales and Mrs. Tonaclyff. It only took me eight years and several boards later to get student reps on the Board of Ed. And, um, we, we worked on this policy and I actually went to different districts and pulled language from different policies and had the board attorney look at it. And the reason that it's ended up being only twelfth graders is in consultation with Principal Moore, he felt and we agreed that freshmen transitioning into ninth grade needed that time to get through the transition. And, uh, tenth, eleventh graders would be, you know, doing college tours, college acceptance letters, the whole nine. And we thought maybe twelfth graders, by the time they're in the twelfth grade, they would have some cushion because they might have already completed the required credits to graduate. And they would have cushion and so they'd have time to actually attend three or four hour board meeting. Um, the election of the students, uh, take place with the student body, with their advisor and the principal approval. I know from the past liaisons, they had a website, they, they, they sent out surveys, they posted on social media for input from elementary, middle school. If that's not happening now, then that's a different discussion to have. But I, I don't know what's happening now. Though, I'll, I'll send you an email for the rest of my comments, but I just want to add for the homeless statute, be very careful with that. The homeless students also include students from disaster areas, whether it's Alabama, Puerto Rico, or whatever. And under the homeless statute, you get federal funds from the federal government to educate kids who are technically homeless. Okay? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mordecai. And, um,
You're welcome.
You know, I, I know how long you worked on it because I've heard you talk about it. And that's why I thought it was really important that we maintain that policy. And so I think you said it's just twelfth grader. So we'll have to go back and take a look at that because it currently says eleventh and twelfth graders. So we will, um, definitely take a look. Um, Dr. Kascone?
Ye- yes. Um, so, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, and I appreciate Mrs. Mordecai's, uh, feedback about the, you know, the, the, the readings. Uh, my understanding is, you know, we are not, we did not engage in any first readings tonight. Um, the only readings, um, that we did were the second reading and the adoption of the policies that were actually on the agenda as an attachment. Um, the policies in which we were, uh, you know, which we were discussing recently, you know, were neither. They're, they were really just, it was, they were, they were somewhere between first and second. They went through a first reading. And now we're just continuing really to discuss them and bat them around so that ultimately when we put them back on the agenda as a second reading, they're in the proper format and a final proof, um, that the board would feel comfortable adopting. Obviously, um, you know, when, when we're turning over so many policies and, and in such a short amount of time, it does raise a a fair question about how do we develop a process where we're being expedient in trying to, um, get this policy manual, be, you know, exercising all due diligence, expedience and getting this policy manual updated, which we know is, 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 needs to get done. But also creating a process through which and by which community members, should they so choose and wish to, can weigh in and provide feedback. You know, the, the, the process of, uh, of, of even just simply keeping track of all these reviews and first readings, but then also ensuring that we're being diligent about putting them up on the website. So I, I would, I would transparently agree with Mrs. Mordecai that, um, that our process, um, needs some work. I think we are in compliance, but it isn't necessarily a best practice. And that's something we need to look at and try and be a little bit more effective and efficient the way we do that.
If I might add, I did want to say that in the regulation on the Strauss ESME, it does say that when the original district of residents anticipate the need to apply for reimbursement for transportation costs, it shall send executive county superintendent to request documentation on family crisis for confirmation, the situation meets the criteria. So I think, um, I, I can't find it right now, but I do remember reading that, um, yes, for homeless, uh, homeless, uh, students that there is reimbursement for the school district, um, to help cover the costs. And I'm, I'm gonna, we said we're going to table this for more discussion. Or are we going to push it through? I'm just sorry. I wanted to be clear. I closed my notes.
So let's move on to the next question.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing about the student liaison. Could we ask for the liaison's input on how they feel is working? Would that be something maybe, or is it not appropriate?
Kascone could certainly do that for us. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Craftisa, next.
Sure. Uh, the Zoom name is li- is listed as Mrs. Azato. Uh, pardon if I mispronounced that. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please. Again, the Zoom name is listed as Mrs. Azato, A-Z-Z-A-T-O. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. Or maybe you mistakenly raised your hand. If so, you can lower your hand. And she lowered her hand. Okay, must have been a mistake. No problem. And at this time, do we have anyone else who would like to speak? It's the raise your hand function and for our call-in, uh, patron, it is star nine. I know. That's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. And Ms. Huerta, you had a question. So I don't know if that's a, a question. We just want to circle back around to uh, Mr. Rothstein or, uh, Ms. Merklinger. You, you had a question as to where we ended up in something?
Right. I don't remember now, um, if we were going to adopt it or what was the final? I don't know consensus. I guess, let me see when I pulled it up.
I'm sorry, which policy?
Five-one-one-one, the one that I was.
Oh, so five-one-one-one, I had noted, um, changes, we were going to add two paragraphs from the West Orange policy, five-one-one-eight. Uh, let me just go back to that. I think that was, yeah, with regards to non-residents and other non-residents.
Okay.
So there's the first paragraph, West Orange policy, five-one-one-eight opens with a paragraph about non-residents and the recommendation was to insert that. So am I in the wrong place here?
I think, yeah, I think it's the second page on five-one-one-eight, other non-resident pupils.
That's the second change. So non-residents on page one of the West Orange policy into page seven of the Strauss ESME. And from page two, other non-residents um into page eight of the Strauss estimate.
Correct, that you're right. That's what I have noted here.
Okay, are we good? Yeah. Yes.
You're good, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So our next board meeting is Monday, February eighth at seven thirty PM. And we hope that everyone will come out and join us. And thank you to the folks who joined us this evening. And at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Thank you.
I was taken.
Okay, everyone who wants to go home?
Hi.
We're already home.
I'm not.
Have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone when I end the meeting ends for everyone, both on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.